Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk could call the roll, please.
Councilmember McKeown?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Just calling, so it's counterintuitive, you push the button and when it goes up, the mic is on, and when it goes down, the mic is off.
I read the direction.
You're messing with us, aren't you?
I'm here, Denise.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Here.
Councilmember O'Day?
Good morning, sunshine.
Councilmember O'Connor?
Here.
And Mayor Winter?
Here.
And if the court could call the first item on the agenda, please.
Sure, it's closed session and you have several existing litigations. The Federal Aviation Administration versus the City of Santa Monica. Santa Monica versus Atlantic Aviation. Santa Monica versus American Flyers. Santa Monica versus the United States of America. Santa Monica versus the Federal Aviation Administration. You have one anticipated litigation and you have three requests to speak.
All right, those speakers are Alan Levinson first, and then it looks like Burya Finkel has donated two minutes to Jonathan Stein, so Jonathan will get four minutes, and then that cleanup will be Xena Josephs. Welcome, Alan.
Good morning, everybody. Alan Levinson. Several days ago, you gave the go-ahead to build the latest, greatest, most sustainable and green city services building ever. A building that requires no external water, electric, or sewer hookups. A livable building. A building that costs more per square foot than the most expensive building ever built in New York City. The city buys electric vehicles, installs the latest charging systems in public parking areas, and promotes riding bicycles, taking public transportation, and walking. And then there's the airport. Not green, not sustainable, polluting, dangerous, and unsafe. The photo and overlay handed out shows an airport that has the potential to ruin lives from Century City to the Pacific Ocean with daily commuter flights 35 years ago. Fractional ownership began with a few jets, just a few jets flying out of SMO. Today, we have up to 90 jet flights per day, according to the airport's monthly report. If JetSuite X and SMO continue to operate, we can expect the same exponential growth of commuter-type flights over the next decades. Hundreds, maybe thousands of passengers per day, flying in and out over the homes of Santa Monica and Los Angeles from an airport less than 250 feet away. I hope everyone's listening. If the city runs an FBO and sells fuel at Santa Monica Airport, we will be supporting the most polluting, inefficient, and unsustainable means of transportation on the planet. If seeking respect and recognition for being a model, green, and sustainable city is truly a goal for Santa Monica and its leaders, then stop this ticketed and scheduled flight folly before it starts. Stop JetSuite X and kick out its partner in crime, Atlantic Aviation. Then take the 1949 quit-claimed, clearly quit-claimed Western parcel out of operation, and finally, shut this airport down. Actions speak louder than words. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Thanks very much. This presentation is meant to be educational, and it's meant to discuss one possible action against JetSuite X, which is a cease and desist order. There are two different types of cease and desist orders that a municipal power base of municipal power can do. A municipal power has the police power. So one type of cease and desist order is to give a cease and desist, saying if you continue, we will use our police powers. You send a captain, you send three patrolmen, you bring yellow tape, and you take a police action. You don't have to arrest anybody, you just put yellow tape across the counter, yellow tape across a plane in egress or entrance, and say you can't cross that, and you have a policeman there to enforce it. Then there's another type of cease and desist order where you go to court. Because it's a municipality, you have the ability to have a policeman enforce your cease and desist order and force the other guy to go to court. JetSuite X, if given a couple of days' notice, saying this is what we're going to do, they will have an opportunity to go to a federal judge and say, hey, the city's wrong. If the city goes ahead and uses its police force, and it is wrong, the city has enormous immunities. Not absolute, but enormous immunities in case the city is wrong. So the idea would be, just like a developer that comes in and says, I want a permit to demolish a building, and they say, well, listen, that building's on the city's historic register. You can't demolish it, you get no permit. JetSuite X can't get a permit. The developer says, well, listen, I'm going to demolish it anyway, and a neighbor calls up saying, my goodness, he's got a bulldozer, he's getting it off a flatbed truck. So you send a building inspection official and say, we're red tagging you, you're trying to knock down a historic building without a permit. He says, take your red tag and take it, it'll be done in three hours. At that point, the city does not have to go to court for a temporary restraining order. At that point, the city can get a policeman to stop the gentleman, and if the gentleman refuses to stop, it's now a penal code matter. It's not a building code matter. When an officer imbued with the law, enforcing the law, says you've got to stop, and you say, no, I won't, that's a penal code violation. That's different. That's criminal. So what you can do is the same thing to JetSuite X and saying, listen, we're going to give you a couple of days' notice, cease and desist order, we're going to use the police to stop you, we're going to put a yellow tape across the counter, we're going to have police officers there. If they then refuse to stop, which I doubt they will refuse, because I don't see any passenger getting on a jet by walking past a policeman, if they refuse, then it is a penal code violation. The question is whether the city is going to meet a challenge by a ruthless and aggressive foe. They are ruthless, they are aggressive, and they are a foe of the city. They have no right to be there in the first place, and yet they're bringing back commercial service that was last seen over 20 years ago. So I think we should use the city police force, I think we should use a high-ranked officer that can speak well, I think we should use patrolmen that don't lose their head, that maybe have a few gray hairs, or female that deal very well with people. We've got tons of those people like that, and we should stop JetSuite X on February 6th. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Josephs?
Good morning. When I was a child, there were certain smells that I just loved. One of them was my dad's Old Spice aftershave. And I think all of us have certain aromas or smells that bring such pleasant thoughts to us. This morning, I walked out my front door, and what I inhaled was jet exhaust. I could have been at LAX, and it makes me gag. I live six blocks north of the west end of the runway. The planes are not taking off over my house, normally doesn't bother me, but to have to inhale that air is disgusting. It's the same thing I've smelled in West LA and the northwest LA neighborhood when I've attended airport rallies across Centinela from the east end of the runway, and when I walked door-to-door in 2014 trying to recruit phone bankers when we were trying to pass Measure LC. In October, I went to the Airport Commission Monday night. In October 2016, in one day alone, there were 99 jet landings and takeoffs at Santa Monica Airport. This has to be stopped. I'm cheerful this morning because I'm really tired and I'm really angry, and so since I'm restraining myself from yelling, this is what happens to me. This has been going on for decades. It has to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public input. Councilmembers will now adjourn into closed session someplace back there, or over there, or someone's going to... Well, let the attorneys lead us.
Stephanie's going to...
And I do not believe it'll be a lengthy closed session, but I don't know exactly how long it would be. It could be 10 minutes, it could be 15 minutes, it could be a little longer. I don't think it'll be extremely long.
All right. Thank you. Back to order, to the public session, and we will have a report out from our legal team.
Hello. Is the mic on?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. In closed session, the city council discussed aspects of each of the items on the closed session agenda. There is action to report out on Item 1A, which is the Federal Aviation Administration versus the City of Santa Monica Notice of Investigation, Part 16, FAA Docket Number Item 1D, City of Santa Monica versus the United States of America, United States District Court, Number CB 1308046. And lastly, the City of Santa Monica versus the Federal Aviation Administration, United States Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, Case Number 16-72827. The city has entered into, or is entering into, a consent decree agreement with the United States of America and the Federal Aviation Administration, which completely resolves all of the outstanding disputes in each of the three matters that I just mentioned. The city and the United States and the FAA have agreed that the airport will close December 31st, that the airport will close no later than December 31st, 2028, that in the interim, the operational length of the runway will be reduced to 3,500 feet. With regard to that, it is anticipated that the reduction in runway length will cause over 40% of current jet operations to no longer be able to use Santa Monica Airport. It will eliminate, once the runway is reduced, it will eliminate all possibility of charter operations operating out of Santa Monica Airport. The agreement removes all restrictions on the airport property that are currently subject to all the lawsuits. That means that what's called the instrument of transfer and the quit-claimed deed property restrictions are removed. The FAA agrees that the city can operate a fixed-based operation, a fixed-based operation, if the city so elects to, and the land that is no longer, would no longer be needed for a runway could be used, is released from airport purposes and can be used as the city so desires, subject to aviation easement, meaning that essentially, that for instance, the city couldn't construct a 10-story building at the end of the runway. Let me just see. The FAA will work with the city on, if the city so requests, having Santa Monica become a demonstration project for unleaded fuel. The parties agree that, I'm just reading various terms, that not to undermine each other's efforts in pursuing their respective rights under this agreement. It is recommended by the, and there are a variety of other terms, this resolves also not only those lawsuits, but any claims that could have been brought by either the United States against Santa Monica, or Santa Monica against the United States. All disputes are ended. There could obviously be future disagreements of one kind or another. We hope not. The parties agree to cooperate and try to resolve those as best we can. It is a recommendation of the city attorney's office, it is a recommendation of outside counsel Morrison and Foster, and is a recommendation of outside counsel Anderson Krieger, that the city council approve this consent decree agreement. And about that, it's a consent decree, and what that means, it will be monitored by the U.S. District Court here in California. It will, if there's a future dispute or disagreement about whether one side or the other is following the terms of the agreement, we will not get lost in a Part 16 proceeding, as we have in years past. It will be resolved by a court. And so again, it is recommended completely by the city attorney's office and all outside counsel who have been involved in the disputes over these many years, that the city council approve this. Thank you.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Davis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. My question is, what effect, if any, does this potentially have on fuel sales, jet fuel sales in particular?
Well, it's a little hard to know, but it's assumed that jet fuel sales, once the runway is reduced, will significantly decrease because many, many, as I said, more than 40% of jets that currently use the, of jet, more than 40% of current jet operations will no longer occur because of the shortening of the runway. That presumably will have a significant effect on jet fuel sales. And I should say one other thing, and that's not on this point. This agreement has been approved by the Federal Aviation Administration, it has been approved by the United States Department of Justice in Washington D.C., and it has been approved by the White House.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes. I had a conversation with our city attorney a couple of days ago, thinking that this might be happening, and in the shortening of the runway to 3,500 feet now, is there, I was wondering if there's a possibility, you mentioned there is an easement, obviously, up against the runway, but is it a possibility that we could direct staff to begin to start looking at possible cut-throughs now that would connect, for example, on the other side of Ocean Park to Airport Road, to start alleviating some of the traffic now?
That, I defer to the city manager and the director of public works, that's obviously not a legal call. There is, this, this agreement allows for many things. It's no longer, for instance, if we get, and I should also mention, obviously, this agreement ensures local control.
Exactly.
And so as part of that, as part of the future planning, many things are on the table, and perhaps the city manager can answer the question.
I think that goes to the provision that the city attorney referenced, that land that is freed up, is at our discretion on using.
Thank you. Councilmember Hemrich?
So, my question is simple. Does this agreement require that we close the airport?
Require at the end of 2028?
Yes.
No, I'll read the exact, no, it does not. I'll read the, and I'll read the exact language of the, the agreement, the exact language of the agreement on this regard is, "If the city does not enter into future agreements with the FAA that continue to require the city to operate the airport after December 31, 2028, the parties agree that the city may, in its sole discretion, at any time, on or after January 1, 2029, cease to operate the airport as an airport, and may close the airport to all aeronautical use forever, subject only to the applicable 30-day notice requirement set forth," and then it gives a section of U.S. law.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
But as I understand that language, Mr. Lawrence, it means that when, if, or when the city decides to close the airport as of that date, the FAA can do nothing to stop us. Is that correct?
That's correct, and there is another sentence here and there, and I don't, we don't have it quoted here, that says that obviously the FAA can agree to an earlier date, complying with certain aspects of federal law. So this is the outermost date.
Any other questions? Then I have a question for the city manager, so how soon will we anticipate shortening the runway to the new length of 3,500 feet?
It will be a minimum of three or four months, a maximum of five or six months. We anticipate we are going to move as expeditiously as it is possible to move to effectuate the closure.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I think we need to have a motion.
I'll move the settlement, the consent decree. Move to approve.
All right. Moved by Councilmember O'Day, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McKeown?
No.
Councilmember Vasquez?
No.
Councilmember Hemrich?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connor?
Yes.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes. So we have, by four-three to vote, have agreed to enter into this consent decree agreement with the federal government regarding operations at Santa Monica Airport.
Mayor?
Yes.
In keeping with Council Rule 13, I'd like to place on the record the reason for my no vote. Five months ago, this council, with my enthusiastic support, voted to close Santa Monica Airport by June 30, 2018, the beginning of next summer. Today's settlement keeps the airport open until December 31, 2028, essentially until 2029. That's 12 long years from now. With this settlement, we snatched defeat from the jaws of victory. This at a time when the FAA's willingness to negotiate revealed the FAA itself suspected they would lose their court battles with Santa Monica even while they continued to hold our land hostage. Now, I was silent in public discussion today because the decision had already been made and the documents had been signed in Washington. I can assure the community, though, that I was adamant and consistent in my opposition to this settlement, and expressed my opposition repeatedly in closed session legal discussions that led to today's public action. This consent decree means that planes, including some jets, will continue to fly for 12 more years. The mandate Santa Monica voters sent the council with Measure LC is deferred for 12 more years. Airport park is delayed for 12 more years. I vote no for all those reasons.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes, I was also pretty much in agreement with the comments that were just made by Councilman McKeown. While I think we did, you know, the attorneys did a great job in negotiating back and forth because this has been going on for some time, and, but for me, really, the clincher was, I feel that while there's no guarantee in these decisions, especially when you put it before a judge, whether you win or lose, I thought we had a strong enough case that worst-case scenario, we would close this thing by 2023. That's my, really, my biggest, that was for me the biggest deciding factor. I think it's great that we're going to be able to shorten the runway. I personally was pushing more for 3,000, but 3,500, I think, will eliminate quite a bit of the corporate jets and possibly even some of the smaller jets, from what I understand, because of the insurance issues that might come up with those private jets. At the end of the day, I just hope, and I guess I send this out more to the public, moving forward, you know, we need to be very vigilant and make sure that we do continue to elect a very progressive council, because 12 years from now, we won't be sitting here, most of us, and I'd hate to see, while this language says it may have the opportunity to close, I'd hate to see the future council cut a deal with the FAA to continue to operate this airport any longer than 12 years.
Councilmember Hemrich?
I do agree with everything that's been said. I also want to say that I see the positive aspects of this, that we will not have commercial jet operations, that we will have certainty in 12 years. On the other hand, I don't believe that this guarantees certainty, because I think that it is left to the discretion of a future council. I think that a lot happens in 12 years. I certainly will not be here in 12 years. And I further believe that having the burden of even a reduced number of jets over our neighborhoods and affecting our residents is something, and frankly, West LA's residents is something that is unacceptable to me. So that is why I voted no.
Any further comments from council members? All right, we are moving on to Item 4A. Oh, wait, the clerk needs to ask if anybody's traveled since Tuesday.
Excuse me. And the, both, we have handouts, if anybody wishes to have, see the handouts. The handouts are two items. One is just essentially a bullet point thing, and the other contains some of the actual language. There's a three-page handout which contains some of the actual language of the agreement.
Okay, has anyone, does anyone have anything to report on travel since Tuesday?
Actually, I'm in the middle of a travel. I'm actually in Santa Barbara technically today because I have a room there for the ICA, Independent Cities Association. I represent the city and actually on the executive board. And I thought I could stay, but I actually have to go back for a board meeting on Sunday, so I will be leaving shortly after this meeting.
Well, we appreciate you being here while you're traveling.
Thank you.
All right. Can you call the Item 4A, please?
Sure. Item 4A is the Use of a Framework for Performance Management and Data-Driven Decision-Making, and you have no request to speak.
All right. Presumably, someone's starting us off on this, so that'd be the...
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, members of the public and staff who are here, I want to thank all of you for participating in this important discussion on Saturday morning, to talk about how we improve achieving the results that matter most to the citizens and residents of our community. Santa Monica has long had a progressive reputation dedicated to providing a wide range of first-class services to our residents. We're also committed to achieving the city council's five strategic goals. In order to do both those things, to continue to offer first-class services in a fiscally sustainable way, and to achieve the strategic goals, which we took a major step forward on one of them just this morning, we need to tackle a third challenge, which is improving the way government works. We're going to spend the morning talking about how we improve the way government works, but first, we're going to hear the city's annual report. It's a brief video that will give the public a report on what we've accomplished in the last fiscal year. So let me introduce our communications director, Debbie Lee.
Good morning, Mayor, is this on? Good morning, Mayor Winter, council. Each year, we produce a report to summarize city staff accomplishments. For the past two years, in place of a traditional written report, we've created a website that houses stats and produced an overview video. Today, we're happy to debut this video, and I hope you enjoy it. Please take a look.
We have had an incredible year getting things done in Santa Monica. After decades of planning, major infrastructure projects were completed. And last year, my fellow city council members and I identified five strategic goals to focus on.
The arrival of Expo Light Rail provides a new option of moving around, and we rerouted our entire Big Blue Bus system to connect to the metro system.
These efforts were part of a fun citywide behavior change campaign called Go Samo, to inform and encourage people to try one of our great transit options.
We focused on maintaining an inclusive and diverse community by protecting affordable housing, raising the minimum wage, and helping Santa Monicaans stay in their homes.
Since the 1920s, Santa Monicaans have been the rightful landowner of the 227 acres occupied by the Santa Monica Municipal Airport. City Council approved the concept design for a multi-acre airport park expansion project.
Since 2009, Santa Monica reduced homelessness by 20%, while Los Angeles County has seen a 21% increase to over 46,000 individuals.
Lifelong learning is a priority in Santa Monica, shaped through the city's collaboration with schools, service providers, residents, and community leaders. We continue to build on work spearheaded by the Cradle to Career Initiative and through the wide range of arts, education, and after-school experiences.
More than 80,000 people participated in the city's arts, culture, and library events and special programming in our parks and beaches.
That's great progress on our strategic goals, but that's not all we've been working on. So let's share some of the incredible work that's happened this year.
This year, Expo Light Rail opened, and along with it came the Colorado Esplanade, and also, the California Incline reopened.
Our Breeze Bike Share System celebrated its first birthday with 43,000 subscribers and 285,000 trips. We have 500 smart bikes located at 85 stations throughout Santa Monica and Venice, and we also install Scramble Crosswalks at 12 intersections in our downtown core.
Big Blue Bus is a regional transportation system carrying 54,000 passengers daily on a fleet of 200 clean-fuel buses, and makes 16.5 million trips per year.
We work with the community to create and operate beautiful, accessible public spaces and facilities for all to enjoy.
We provided high-quality, out-of-school-time youth programming. Last year, our collective programs registered over 24,600 individuals.
We exposed 29 high school students to the tech sector through the Youth Tech Program. Since the program's inception, 111 high school students have completed the program. A 100% of alumni seeking internships were placed... A 100% of alumni seeking internships were placed with companies.
The five branches of the library system had a total of over 1 million visitors and over 990,000 visits to the website.
Public safety is a top priority in the city of Santa Monica. Our police department safeguards our city, improving the quality of life for our residents and forming solid relationships between our community and our officers.
Santa Monica Fire Department continues to maintain a Class 1 ISO rating, the highest possible rating that can be given to any fire department nationwide by the Insurance Services Office.
In 2015, the city of Santa Monica experienced an increase in Part 1 offenses by 27%. These totals are still within the comparable lows of the late 1950s. A significant portion of the increase is a result of nonviolent property thefts. We are focused on crime prevention strategies and have seen a decrease of 3.4% in the first part of 2016.
The fire department responded to over 16,000 calls for service, nearly 80% related emergency medical service.
Prudent financial management has earned the city a AAA credit rating since 1995 and clean audits for over 30 years. General fund financial reserves are currently equal to 15% of the annual operating and revenue-supported capital budget.
100% of the city's department electricity comes from direct access power procurement. It's a clean power source resulting in the savings of over $2.5 million this year.
Council approved a $117 million capital improvement budget for fiscal years 15 and 16. These funds contributed to many large projects.
Staff responded to 13,000 requests through the GO system. We handled everything from calls about graffiti to noise complaints. We completed 1,200 streetlight repairs, 80% within five days. We also repaired seven miles of streets, and 2,270 tons of debris were also swept from the city's streets.
We've integrated our resource management with our conservation efforts and remain focused on climate-friendly practices within city operations.
408 residents and businesses made the switch to sustainable landscapes, and together, we saved over 8 million gallons of water. Santa Monica's greenhouse gas emissions are now 20% lower than they were in 1990.
Last year, we had 1.1 million views on the city's Open Data Portal. This is four times the number of views year over year. Check out the Open Data Portal. It includes high-value data on everything from water use and parking to the well-being survey.
The Well-Being Project is a great example of the city's innovative approach to examining Santa Monica's ever-evolving needs. We are able to use these statistics to help shape our priorities, policies, and programs to improve community well-being.
Santa Monica CityNet, the city's fiber optic network, made a significant impact this year by launching a digital inclusion pilot connecting 10 affordable housing buildings with 10 gigabit broadband.
1,200 people took our Downtown Community Plan Survey to help shape the future of the downtown. Each month, we receive more than 500,000 impressions on the city's main social media channels alone. We have 11,000 new followers on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
We look forward to another productive year as we continue to build on our successes and tackle the toughest challenges facing our community.
Together, we can make great progress on even the most difficult issues and achieve some great things for Santa Monica. So to see more of our annual accomplishments, visit annualreport.smgov.net. I want to compliment our communications staff, all the staff and councilmembers who participated, as well as a very talented film crew from City TV. So to begin this morning's retreat and study session on how we align the city more effectively to deliver results both on day-to-day services and results on our strategic goals, we're going to talk about the Well-Being Index. It's really established Santa Monica as a national leader in reshaping how we think about the work of the public sector. It refocuses the public sector not on what we do, but why we do it. That is to say, a lot of the services that we traditionally provide were invented at a particular time for a particular reason in a particular place. Today, we face new challenges, and so if we understand what we're trying to accomplish, it's easier to identify meaningful metrics so we can establish what we want to achieve and manage toward achieving those specific results. It gives us an opportunity to rethink the way we do them, to do them in a more effective, efficient, and modern way. As we've added services over the years in Santa Monica, it's important to measure why we're doing those things and to do more of the things that have a real impact on the things that matter most and do less of the things that don't actually produce the results we hope for. The Well-Being Project gives our community really a groundbreaking opportunity to do just that, because well-being in its five dimensions begins to encompass what our residents care about most. And it gives us a better gauge for how well our community is doing, how well both the individual residents and families that live here, as well as the larger sense of neighborhood, sense of place, sense of engagement, sense of well-being and health. It gives us a better measure of how well we are succeeding at serving our residents, and it allows us to better calibrate our efforts to improve result, to improve our services and to achieve clear and measurable results. So after years of working on the Well-Being Index, we're moving forward now with a larger framework that integrates what we do day-to-day in our 11 departments with the larger umbrella of well-being. Now, we are not alone in beginning to align our services with the larger purpose of why we're here as a government and begin to integrate how we budget to produce the results through performance budgeting. Since the 1980s, in New York City, many jurisdictions, starting in law enforcement but spreading really citywide across the country, have begun to use a model often called CompStat or Performance Stat, or in Louisville, they call it Louis Stat; in Baltimore, they call it City Stat. Regardless of the name, what they have in common is a problem-solving methodology that takes as its inspiration something the great management writer Peter Drucker said, "That which gets measured, gets done." If you measure something, you focus people's energy on better achieving that result. One of the nation's experts in this field is Professor Bob Bain at the Harvard Kennedy School. He wrote, "Clarifying and reiterating an organization's purpose can keep everyone focused on what is to be accomplished." Sometimes, in government, we get focused more on the process and less on the results. We want to move that dial closer to, without cutting through, important protections that process give us. Not do process for the sake of process, but have process for making sure we color within the appropriate lines to get the job done. An effective performance management system really is citywide. You can't just have it in one piece of government and a different piece or division or department. It really has to permeate how we do business as a city, because we are one city. Everything that one department does is touched by another department. The issue of homelessness, for example, one of your five strategic goals, no single department has responsibility for that. Our fire department respond to homeless people who are in distress. Our police department respond when homeless people are either the victims of or accused of criminal behavior. Our libraries are affected by the presence of homeless people who, like everyone else, have a right to utilize our public resources. The same with our parks, our public streets, our business community, our residents, our alleys. All of these things are affected. All of the people responsible for all those services have to work together if we're to reduce the amount of homelessness in our community. So this year, we're going to take a look at all of the services we provide and see how they align with your strategic goals and with the broader well-being framework. We're going to learn from cities that I mentioned, ones like Richmond, Virginia, Baltimore, Maryland, Lincoln, Nebraska, all of which have adopted performance-based budgeting as a way of aligning how they spend their money. And we're beginning to do that with our two-year budget cycle. We'll actually be developing a framework as the beginning part of that budget that will begin to baseline and benchmark the statistics that will identify what we want to measure over the next two years and allow us, in the next two-year budget cycle that follows this one, to move resources to where they can do the most good. Like any sustainable organizational change, this takes years to do and to do well. And like any sustainable organizational change, it begins at the top. That's why we're here today. Whether it's experts, textbooks, or just common sense life experience, if our resident citizen customers don't feel that the city council is invested and leading this charge, they're not going to believe that it's real. And our staff, if they don't see our city council embracing and leading and shaping this effort, they won't believe that it's real. You have set that leadership by identifying your strategic goals. You've set that leadership by sponsoring and supporting the Well-Being Index. You've set that over the last two decades by us being the first to develop a sustainability framework, which really, in many ways, anticipated the work of other cities at identifying things like what we just heard from Garrett Wong, that the reason we are producing 20% lower greenhouse gas emissions than we did in 1990 is because this city set that goal and worked tirelessly to achieve that goal. That's the same kind of principle we want to apply to all of your strategic goals and to all of the well-being dimensions. To kick off the discussion and frame how other communities are doing this, to show where we are ahead, to show where we are dealing with the same problems, and to show where we can learn from other communities, we've asked our partner in the development of the Well-Being Index, Anita Chandra from the RAND Corporation. She's the Director of Justice, Infrastructure, and the Environment. You know her as being a remarkable national expert. She has a doctorate in public health from Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. She's nationally known as a leader in civic well-being and urban planning, as well as community resilience and child health and development. And throughout her career, she's been involved with both governmental and nongovernmental partners, and she brought that experience to the work on the development of the Well-Being Index. So let me introduce Anita Chandra.
Thanks, Rick, and good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So as Rick shared, I'm going to try and put a little bit of this work in some context and give a little bit of a historical backdrop on the last couple of years of the work with Julie and others here in Santa Monica. And then Julie will kind of pick up the charge and talk a little bit more specifically about how we're seeking to transition all of this great work into integrating into the accomplishments already that the city has achieved with Sustainable Cities and Cradle to Career, and then where do we go from here? I hope this is certainly an interactive exchange and ripe for a lot of questions as we kind of delve a little bit more deeply into some of the details today. So we have a few slides, but certainly, hopefully, this is an interactive dialogue. So as Rick shared, I mean, this is an interesting time, certainly an interesting time in America, an interesting time in global discourse around what is the purpose and values of communities and cities. So well-being actually comes at an opportune time in our discussion as a community and as a nation. So we started this, of course, a few years ago, but it's now even more resonant to think about the role of cities to help communities really thrive and flourish. So where did this all start in the world was, quite frankly, people saying, "Look, the role of government is importantly to maintain processes and operation, but it actually has a higher and more loftier goal. How does it help communities and populations thrive, flourish, compete in the 21st century?" And so I just wanted to give a little bit of backdrop on kind of where this is coming and then where Santa Monica is kind of fitting into this larger, global, and national discourse. Next slide. So why are we here, essentially, in measuring civic well-being? And I'll talk a little bit about the timeline and how we've been developing over the last couple of years. But I think this quote is particularly poignant, that we actually surfaced a couple of years ago, and it's still resonant now. "We are always seeking to think about holistic and integrative agendas. We're not only better together, as that video showed, but we are much more efficient and effective with resources, with time, with policies and programs when we do things in a more integrative way." And so well-being always sought to not be this sort of separate project, but to think about how to build on the successes of the Santa Monica community and then look at synergies and opportunities for commonalities. So that's a really important piece. And there are three pieces of why this, why now, essentially. So there are a lot of things that communities do and city government does to try and understand what policies are working, what programs are working. You certainly saw that in the earlier discussion. But what well-being really does is it goes to the why point that Rick has articulated in terms of what is the value of the community, what are the sets of values of the community, and what does it want to achieve in terms of a thriving and flourishing population? What does that look like, not just today, but 10 years from now, 20 years from now? And then work backward to think about the indicators and think about those programs and policies that are as robust as possible. So that's kind of why people are saying, "Okay, it's not enough to have these sort of siloed investments in different parts of community functioning. We have to be about something bigger than that, that combines it all." So that's really where this is emerging. Now, in Europe, for many years, and many of you may know this, they have been thinking about, "Okay, well, how do we measure the progress of a community beyond GDP?" And so decades ago, people looked at the communities and said, "That's not enough to look at economic progress. That doesn't tell me anything about how individual populations are doing. It doesn't tell me anything about critical equity issues, which are increasingly important in today's conversation. It doesn't tell me anything about resilience or anything else that we care about in terms of communities." And so how do we actually elevate the outcomes that we look at beyond simply economic indicators? So this is where it's kind of rooted. And certainly, we take lessons from our European friends and colleagues, friends in Asia, but also Canada has been doing well-being indices for some time. The other thing that well-being allows us to do is create a platform for more partnership across government and nongovernment, which is critical, as we know. And this is a thriving community with respect to the role of community-based organizations and advocacy groups and others. When we've been starting this work for many years, and I've worked a lot in resilience, as Rick noted, as well as well-being, these are the kinds of constructs and ways of talking about communities that a lot of community organizations respond to, resonate with, and can align their programs and policies around. It doesn't mean the details of day-to-day operations aren't important, but this allows people to sort of see themselves in something that is greater. And most nonprofits and businesses are thinking that they are contributing to the civic well-being of a population. So how do we create and use a common framework to not just align within government, but also across government, nonprofit, and business? So that's kind of some of the early motivations and why we got to this place and where this is setting in kind of national and global conversation. Next slide. There are things really important to know and where this kind of sits relative to other actions of other communities is that, quite simply, people are starting to kind of measure well-being. You see, some people have maybe seen this in the national papers around the Gallup poll, trying to understand what's going on with people's feelings about their community and their life. But that's kind of not enough. That only tells you one piece of the story. It doesn't really tell you what's being invested in, in communities to create conditions, to promote well-being. It actually doesn't really help to take some of that information and not do anything with it in order to translate it into well-being policy and practice. So you see a lot of these kinds of dashboard efforts and a lot of community indicator projects, and Rick mentioned City Stat and many other projects around the country. But no one has kind of taken it to that next level and said, "Okay, now that we have all this information about our community, what do we do with it?" And of course, as community leaders, we have a responsibility to do that. Just build that up. So, and you can just build that up. So there are three things that are missing and which we're sort of seeking to kind of evolve, essentially. One is to how to take sort of the good operations of good government, right? Governance and how things work in government, how we're efficient with data, information, people, staff, and resources, and use it in a way that actually promotes well-being. So does that mean that we do things a little bit differently, we strategically align differently? We can actually take well-being data to help us make those decisions internally in government. The second is, of course, as we've talked about, you know, how do we take information of, how do we understand the community, how well the community's connecting? That actually can inform local resource allocation, whether by group or by zip code or by some other kind of factor that matters. other kind of factor that matters. And then we have seen, and we're starting to see more robustness around this, this is something that residents can see themselves and convene around. They can understand that making a better place for themselves and their families, they can see creating economic opportunity is all pieces of what they're striving for, for their families, and where they want to live in terms of a community environment. And we can talk about the dimensions in a minute. Next slide. So just as a background, so people kind of have a refresher and a historical context for this project, there were three phases of this effort. We did this extremely collaboratively with not just international experts and the scientists and the well-being experts, but really people here in the community. And that was critical because it had to make sense and resonate in the community. And then we went about the business of our measurement activities and our efforts today. So I just wanted to briefly run through those pieces. Next slide. So this project actually, and this effort, was underway back in 2013, and it's been kind of an ongoing iterative process. And we started with trying to understand, okay, what does well-being mean for the residents and the organizational leaders in Santa Monica? We did convene a lot of people who could bring expertise within and outside of Santa Monica to make sure that we were, you know, using the best available science, but that wasn't enough alone. We needed to make sure that it could inform actions and activities here in the community. So we met with many of you throughout the process, and really, that helped to guide a framework that is now the Well-Being Framework. We went through a lot of revisions and partner feedback, as you can imagine, during this process, and then arrived essentially at a well-being definition. What does it sort of mean to have civic well-being, not just individual well-being? And then what are the core dimensions? We wanted to make it as streamlined and as manageable as possible because this is not just a exercise in measurement, this is really an exercise in something that is applied and policy-relevant. And so that process certainly took, you know, the better part of a half a year, if not more. Once we had that, next slide, then we really, oh, correct. Then we did the hard work of measurement. And some of this is about new measurement, but actually, a lot of it is about looking at the data that you all already collect as a city and making sense of it in a way that is providing actually insights for action. Some people have heard me say, you know, data is not information alone, it has to be translated into information. And information is not insights alone, it actually has to mean something to city government leaders, community-based organizations, and the like. And so working on those component pieces is critical. And so we worked through a very involved process of thinking about, okay, what do we know already? What can we make sense of efficiently from our various 11 departments and agencies? And then what else can we learn more about in terms of our residents and what their experience is? And so survey information and social media information was critical in this. This was sort of a new-fangled way of thinking about multiple data sources for well-being. And it allowed us to create a much more holistic image of Santa Monica than ever before. And that was important because we didn't just want to just talk to residents and learn how they experience the community, we wanted to know actually where are there things in the community that are promoting well-being or detracting from well-being? So we mapped a lot of things that can say very clearly and definitively, okay, these are spots in the community where we have some limitations, where we could invest differently, where we could do something differently to spark action, particularly action across sectors. And that's sort of a critical thing about the Well-Being Framework, it's not one department working in isolation of another. And so we released the first kind of round of the findings, and I hope people have been on the Santa Monica Well-Being site, in about spring of 2015. That's an ongoing and live process, and we'll be updating the information over the next several months. But that kind of is the platform for convening, for sharing data, and to really under this cohesive framework. Next slide. And then finally, this is the stage that we're really in, and it's an ongoing process. This is really where the energy and the action is, which is, you know, how to sort of take this and use it, you know, how to build on this in terms of what you've already done and accomplished with Sustainable Cities, the work of the Youth Well-Being Report Card, Cradle to Career, all of your efforts. This actually creates much more cohesion and integration and alignment and allows you to do a couple of things. One is to try out some things in neighborhoods. If people remember some of the findings from about a year ago, a year and a half ago, issues around social cohesion and community connection are critical for communities to not only thrive and flourish, but be resilient, now more than ever. And those are things you can actually do something about. You can intervene on those, and these are things I do in other communities all the time. And so there are actionable recommendations. But also now, where the point of the conversation today is to talk about, okay, how do we take your strategic priorities, which really nest beautifully within the Well-Being Framework? How do we build it into government processes? So how you staff, how you resource, how you connect and communicate? And then how do we allow that to surface robust and sustainable policy and programmatic actions? And that's all part of the cycle of creating something much more cohesive and integrated that boils it down to something, once again, actionable and manageable. I've been working in a lot of different places. I work a lot with the city of Pittsburgh right now with Mayor Paduto, who I think in many ways is, got a lot of kinship to Santa Monica's spirit and priorities. And these are the kinds of things that we're doing in places like Pittsburgh, larger places, smaller places, and everything in between. So this is where communities and cities are going. Please, yeah.
You mentioned Millie Puleto, that's Santa Ana, right?
Oh, no, 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 Pittsburgh. That's another.
Another Puleto. Well, I'm sure Pittsburgh has the same issues that Santa Ana does, especially as we refer to youngsters. And you're talking about, you know, this whole well-being.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, in your experiences working with other communities, especially youngsters, you know, we still have kids falling through the cracks here. I mean, we give so much money to the school district, so many resources in the city of Santa Monica with nonprofits, and yet kids are still failing. And I'm wondering, in your experience in other areas, I don't think it's about money at this point. I think it's about redirecting.
Yes.
Where the funds are going.
Yes.
And the reason I mention this is because I brought this up back in the 90s, when I tried to earmark some dollars specifically to the bilingual, bicultural programs in the city, in our school district. And then since then, it's been eroding, and then pretty soon, they were justifying bilingual, bicultural as having somebody working in the front office.
Yeah.
Which I think is a bunch of BS.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, what can we do to make sure that these kids are not failing?
Yeah.
Because if we can't do it in Santa Monica, nobody can.
Yeah. No, great question, and two parts to kind of my response. One is, the Well-Being Framework, I think, does two things, particularly on behalf of kids. First and foremost, the notions around well-being actually are rooted in some of the early work on child development, right? So what does it mean for a kid over the life course to thrive and flourish? What sets of competencies do we want that child to have? And so even early on, when people have been talking about things like not just academic achievement, but social and emotional well-being and social-emotional competency, to be resilient and resourceful and be prepared for the challenges today, all of that is really rooted in a Well-Being Framework, to acknowledge that it's more than, not to diminish academic and cognitive skills, but it's a combination of many skills that we want children to achieve. So I think it affords us a platform to do that. The second thing, which really goes to the coordination, is it aligns a set of entities around a common framework, and so that we are all working off of the same playbook. And I've seen, in my experience, as, and I work a lot with school districts, school districts working much more hand-in-glove with nonprofit organizations that can provide the ancillary and the social support and related services to bring everyone together, but around something that is shared, as opposed to splitting off the functions and the tasks in ways that actually are not holistic, they are not whole child, and they're ultimately not whole community. So I think this is actually all part of your motivate, that question and motivation rationale. This is why we've come here in the world and in communities, is because of those kinds of challenges that generations are facing, and certainly, child well-being is a big part of that. So let me just close up with one last slide, which is essentially where we'll end, and Julie will jump in. These are the dimensions of civic well-being, the five on the bottom. And you have, I think, in one of your handouts essentially, and I'll just quickly go through it. The first one on the far left is community. And so when we think about community, we think about the strength of our social networks, our organizational networks, our sense of community and cohesion, our appreciation of inclusion and diversity, and also the ways that we tend to the environment, we take care of the environment. All of those things are wrapped into our sense of community. And there are dimensions under this and measure areas that are intended to align not only with the science, but actually the data that you collect and could collect in Santa Monica. Places, certainly not surprising here, is very much rooted in your Sustainable Cities efforts, but really about the physical, social, and built environment. How are those working for all populations and in what ways? And how are they promoting well-being? You know, do you have features of the community that actively create conditions that promote a sense of connection to the natural world? And what does that look like? And then how do you think about commerce and what does that do for well-being or not, depending on how it's designed? Lifelong learning is really, and learning is about the lifespan. So it is not just about our primary and secondary education, but the idea that as adults and seniors, we also have to have opportunities to learn, enrich, and essentially flourish in terms of our, not only educational, but other opportunities. Health is certainly not just about physical health, it's about all of the things, social, spiritual, emotional, well-being, and how do we think about that? And then finally, which is so critical to your priorities around inclusion and diversity and affordability, about economic opportunity and the choices that you make in terms of locally-owned businesses, and all of those kinds of pieces are contained. All of these together, their interdependencies and connections across all of these five dimensions of civic well-being, they all inform how individuals in your community and families and households think about their future. And so what we're trying to bring together is not just it's okay to sort of check in with people occasionally to understand their outlook, but that there are active things that can be done along these five dimensions. And so the idea is that well-being is building on a lot of your work today, and that it intersects sustainable places with creating resilient communities, right? Community networks and social cohesion, that's what creates functioning government and the why that Rick articulated, and that's what produces thriving and flourishing people. It makes sense, obviously intuitively, but many cities are not where you all are ready to kind of transition into, to kind of create everything in alignment around that core sentiment and that core definition. And so it's a really, really exciting time. And there, if there's any other questions? Oh.
Yes, Councilmember Hemrich has a question.
So thank you so much, and I really appreciate it. I did look at some other well-being indices in, across the world, basically. And I see that there are aspects of them that I think we maybe haven't looked at. And when I say that, the, so I looked at the Great Britain survey that they've been doing for 10 years, right? I looked at the proposal to do one in the Netherlands that just came out last year. And I looked at the Canadian index. It was just sort of random in what was accessible to me. But so there are a couple of categories that they have that we don't have. And I wonder if that was done deliberately, if they're categories that we ought to add, or whether you think this covers the entire spectrum of well-being.
Yeah. No, great question, and thanks for looking into other areas. So we really were kind of deliberate about trying to create something that would capture the core areas, but also not be overwhelming in terms of number of dimensions, for all the reasons that you can imagine, in terms of what is easier for people to convene around, alignment, and the like. So for example, there is a sort of a time-use dimension in the Canadian Well-Being Index. We kind of embed that as part of a sub-dimension and a measure area within a couple of these five dimensions. So we feel pretty good that we've captured a lot of the constructs. Certainly, this is a live framework in terms of the measure areas that we can add over time, and there may be things in the Netherlands and others that council and others would like to sort of see represented. But we were trying to, I think, cover the basic constructs, and we sort of worked this through with a lot of our experts who've worked on those other indices, but also create something that could be applied and mapped to kind of the city functions, so.
So one of the categories that I thought wasn't well incorporated here was the economic and physical safety that seems to be in a lot.
Yeah.
And in a lot of the other indices, and it seemed to me that, in view of what's going on in the country, and also in view of what we just saw in the report, that our Class 1 crime rate is up, that that ought to be something that I'm not, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not seeing it anymore.
Yeah, so say, public safety is represented as part of a sub-dimension, a little bit in community and a little bit in place. Economic sort of safety in terms of, do you feel like you have enough resources to live from day to day? That's actually included in both economic opportunity, and we ask about it in the resident survey, as well as, so it's there, but we can certainly talk offline about even more detail to it. So whether, whether, I think the sub-dimension, from my perspective, I know those safety measures, I think they're represented pretty well in this, but as opposed to lifting it up as a sixth dimension. But I agree with you that those are important constructs.
And then when you were talking about time use, are you talking about work-leisure balance? Is that what you mean by time?
Yeah, so that, I mean, for example, I mean, a lot of people talk about it now. We have it sort of in the context of health. But obviously, if you can't get into balance about time, essentially, then that matters for your ability to be productive and certainly have good physical and emotional health. Yeah.
And so the, in all of them, there seems to be a sort of life satisfaction overall experience of life category?
Yeah.
And is that in our?
That's an outlook. That's in the outlook of the top, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so life satisfaction is critical. And in fact, what they have noted in Europe, and our colleagues on this are the New Economics Foundation, that really have led the charge in most of Europe on this non-GDP measurement of well-being, is that a one-point difference in the life satisfaction, you know, zero to 10. It can make, is demonstrably sort of correlated with other differences economically and in health outcome. So I agree with you completely that life satisfaction matters. And we've included it in Outlook. We also include kind of ways that people think about their life course. So do you feel like you can adapt to the stresses in your life? Do you feel you have the resources and capabilities and competencies? We asked some questions about hope and optimism, which are very much the kind of subjective well-being questions, which are critical. And the idea being that if things are kind of humming in many ways in terms of how a community is supporting all of those five dimensions, then ideally, you will have residents and families and households with a better outlook for now and to the future. And so those are how those things relate to each other.
I'm sorry, just, so in view, and then I look back at our well-being study and the findings of the well-being study, and, and so the three measures I talked about, people feeling unsafe and economically and physically unsafe, or people feeling disconnected, right? Which I think we have done.
Yeah.
And have studied, seem to be the key findings here in terms of people's overall outlook, is that?
Well, I wouldn't say that unsafe, but I would say certainly the, there are areas for development in terms of social connection, and I think there are obviously areas of development in terms of issues around affordability and life course and ability to, expectations that you're going to be able to live in Santa Monica over the life course and raise your children. We certainly saw that.
And when I say unsafe, I'm talking primarily about the economic factors. I don't really feel that we have a public safety crisis per se.
Yeah.
But it looks to me as if people feel uncertain whether they can keep their jobs, whether they can keep their housing, you know, whether they can keep their kids in school, all of those things.
That's right, yeah. And we've just fielded the second survey, and I think those findings remain consistent, but give us a kind of a roadmap for improvement and intervention. And yeah, a lot of, I think the most resonant, as you can imagine, we had an interesting kind of shape to the curve, which is unusual for well-being. Usually, well-being kind of starts to drop off at the older ages in most cities. And you had a bit of like a U-shaped curve where there was sort of a generation, particularly 25 to 45, where actually it was more depressed, and not depressed in sort of a mental health way, but depressed in the graph. And so, yes, and I think it was related to, can I live and work and stay in Santa Monica?
And our, so everybody studies. And our, so everybody studies this, and you talked about this a little before, but who has looked at the solutions to this?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think you're at a very interesting time where a lot of cities that are on sort of the leading edge are working in parallel to create solution-based approaches. So for example, there are individuals in Guelph in Canada who are now turning this into kind of city plans. Bristol, UK, which is sort of one of our sister cities, this effort is also doing some really interesting things around that. There are other communities that have been kind of more focused on the happiness index, like a Seattle. This is, we felt that that's important, not against happiness, of course, but a much more holistic appreciation of the fact that we are also dealing with a set of challenges as a society, as a country, as a community, like equity, like issues of resilience. And so there are some lessons from places like Seattle that are useful, but I think we're kind of at the, thinking much more holistically about how you intervene on these things. So there are some actions that are coming, bubbling up from different corners. And then people are just starting to apply the frameworks into kind of a policy framework and trying to figure out how to adopt this. So for example, I'm working with the City of Pittsburgh, as I mentioned, on their resilience strategy. They're like 100 resilient cities, like LA is. And that whole goal is to actually do what the conversation today is about in terms of getting it into kind of the core of city budgeting and planning. So you see that, as opposed to just having a community indicators project, which a lot of people have been doing for years, Charlotte, Jacksonville, or City Stat, which really started as a police kind of surveillance, you know, to help public safety officials. This is different, and this is sort of why it's a little bit on the leading edge. But you've got partners in Europe and Canada for sure, as well as a couple of American cities.
And this is my last question.
Sure.
And who are the leaders in, in not only finding the solutions, but testing them?
Yeah, yeah. So I think in terms of like the testing of the solutions, you can sort of start breaking them down by some of these elements. So there are communities like in Barcelona, Spain, and, even in Seattle, actually, to be fair to them, in other places that are taking aspects of community connection and networks and working on that. There are other communities that are working on certainly aspects of the built environment and working on urban placemaking. So the Gail Institute in Philadelphia works a lot with communities on that piece. What hasn't, what I don't see, which is where this is, that's sort of the exciting transition, is an entity that is doing all the solutions at the same time in a coordinated way. Usually, they're doing sort of one in a classic linear or single-siloed way. So they're either working on urban placemaking, they're working on economic opportunity, or they're working on social connection and social cohesion. But now, more than ever, notwithstanding all the investments in cities over the last several years, people are saying, okay, what are you doing in a much more cross-city department way? And that's where, that's where the national attention has gone. Thank you. Sure, great questions.
Councilmember McEwen has a question, or two, who knows?
Well, I'm interested not only, of course, in how we measure well-being, but the actions that we choose to take based on what we measure. And those actions will be informed by how we measure well-being. You mentioned hope and optimism. Those are two things I haven't been feeling in the last few weeks. Just a week ago today, there was a hugely important women's march. If you want to participate, I know it is very meaningful to. And it seems to be that in terms of personal security, there are groups in our society and in our city who are probably feeling newly threatened, and those who include women and immigrants. Now, we don't have a commission on immigration, at least not yet, in the City of Santa Monica. But we do have a commission on the status of women. And when we first broke this well-being index at the press conference you and I had ran two years ago, it was roughly concurrent with a report on the status of women and girls in the City of Santa Monica, 2014. So I'm wondering, A, how this document and other aspects of the work of the Commission on the Status of Women could better be integrated into what we do going forward to accurately measure what may be perceived to be a real, as threats to the status of women. And what are we doing to make sure that through bilingual outreach, et cetera, that we're accurately assessing the well-being of people who are immigrants to our community who may particularly have their well-being at threat right now?
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, and certainly we'll listen to Ryan as well when she gets up here. So I think there's ample opportunity to integrate with the work that's focused on women, people of color, immigrants, and others that the community has. The very base level of doing these kinds of analyses is to look at things and how they differ, certainly by gender, race, ethnicity, primary language, immigration status, and the like. Certainly on the language, gender, and race, ethnicity, we have the ability to do that with a good chunk of the data, and that helps us to sort of create better thinking in terms of program and policy. And then I think we definitely were very focused this round as best as we could, although I think we can always continue to improve to make sure that even just the resident survey, which is not the entire part of the well-being framework, got to as many of our bilingual residents as possible and, you know, Spanish language and things like that to capture that experience. I think there's more that could be done. But you can also see as you emerge from a well-being process, and it's an ongoing process, is what are the kind of characteristics of putting then an equity lens on your planning and development? So for example, I work with other communities that are using a gender equity lens to think about complete streets policies, how you think about gender-related to healthy placemaking. All of those things can come out, and I, you know, I think it would be great to work, you know, with on the status of women, task force recognition and other, I think it's all possible. And being able to then coalesce around that is important. And being able to capture, quite frankly, personal and community sentiment in today's era is exceptionally important for those populations, but all populations.
With hope and optimism, we began this process in kinder and chamber at times. I just hope going forward, we'll make sure that we acknowledge and recognize and act on the new threats that some people are experiencing. That's important, this process.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. What I will say is, I think these are opportunities to think differently about the role of government, right? It actually creates spaces for creativity and innovation if one takes the opportunity that these kinds of conversations, the measurement is a piece of it, but it's really the dialogue that inspires, which is really where the value add of doing this kind of process.
And Mayor Delgado, Mayor Prodeputa has some questions.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions. So it seems to me that a lot of things that we have focused on through the well-being project are things that we've been doing for a long time in this community. But the advantage of the well-being index is, one, it gives us a basis for creation of metrics to measure how we're doing, but it also opens up the opportunity for immigration. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. And I, before we say this, I'm a big believer in sort of not only integrated practice, but also efficiency with data. And one of the things that this surfaces is that we often like get overwhelmed in cities with lots of data, some of which is not that easy. And so it helps us actually weigh through and judge the kinds of metrics that are going to actually help you guide city functioning. I'm going to explain to you something, a good book I call Signal Value. And so that, to me, is also part of our mission.
Well, and it seems to me, for example, that one of your failures, the well-being index, what it has shown us is that it's not just integration within our city departments, but integration with other institutions. For example, I think from looking at the well-being index, as well as just a lot of studies that have been going on, what we're finding out, as Councilmember Vasquez pointed out, when kids fall through the cracks in their teens, it's not about what's happened in their teens, it's about what happened in the zero-to-five timeframe. And in terms, and not just the kids, but their families and the family support they're getting. So for example, you know, we look at the school district and say, why aren't you closing the achievement gap? And it seems to me the answer is because we're failing our kids in the zero-to-five rate. Would that be the kind of integration we could do more efficiently to get better outcomes for our kids?
Absolutely, and I'm glad you raised it. And I think this, and this is where the sort of knitting together of the first run of the well-being framework, the work of the Youth Well-being Report Card, and then the Cradle to Career Initiative, and all of those efforts, is to take a much more not only holistic, but life course approach to this. And to say, a lot of well-being efforts prior to this, and this is where the happiness index and things like that have so focused just on the subjective experience.
Which can be based on a lot of things like temperament and personality. It's sort of divorced that there are things that we do in terms of investment and choices we make as a community that actually contribute over the life course to well-being or not. And so by looking at it across a lifespan and capturing things in the youth well-being efforts with adults and measuring them together, we can start to look at drivers of well-being and not say that it's sort of predetermined, but actually look at this over a trajectory. Everybody lives on sort of a life course, and to actually think about policy that is life course-based, which is not usually how we think about policy. So hopefully, that is, that is the goal.
And then the other question, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, is, and this is a follow-up, I think, maybe to Councilmember McEwen's, is that, you know, when we talk about these metrics or the results we get from the well-being survey, those are meant to inform policy. So for example, when you talk about the fact that we have sort of a U-shaped curve where a lot of our millennials and younger adults are feeling a lot of housing and economic insecurity, the way we're going to move that, we're not trying to move that needle for the sake of moving the needle. What that has to do is then inform our housing policy, for example, about how do we make sure that younger adults feel more secure in their housing, or feel that they have more housing opportunities? Is that right?
That's exactly right, yeah. I mean, these are, these are guideposts, right? And this is why it's not just like a scorecard in the older sort of city government sense. It's really about a kind of a quality improvement process. And we can look at those measures change over time. We can start to measure some new things as the community evolves. The framework stays constant. We still care about these five things or six things that matter. But as we evolve housing policy, or as you kind of achieve many of your strategic objectives, okay, what's the next goalpost? Now, where do we go from here? And that's where it sort of is the performance-based, the outcomes-based management system of a city.
So would it make sense, for example, and this is just something to think about today, later today as we discuss this, to request that when staff brings us a proposal or a policy, you know, just like we have now a line item that says, here's how it's going to affect the budget? Does it make sense to have a line item that says, here's how it's going to affect our community's well-being?
That's exactly right, yes. And this is where communities are going. So as you look at development plans, and people used to do these health impact assessments that are getting wider into other impact assessments, it's not okay that you are just thinking about the primary outcome of your investment, but you're thinking about the secondary or cascading effects. And so that allows you to look at trade-offs and weigh pros and cons, but also kind of force a discourse to make sure that you've got the right stakeholders around the table and that you're accountable to something broader and higher order. So, yes, and but, the best reflection of this will be that it's integrated into not just policy and program, but the first rung of that is where do you, where do you put your priorities and where do you put your resources? And budgeting is a great tool for that as a critical part of city functioning. Great, thank you.
Councilmembers, anybody else have any questions? No? Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes, listening to the conversation, something else just came up. And I think Councilor Gleen Davis is right in terms of zero to five, and I know you've probably experienced it. And I guess it's, and it's no magic that people know that, especially kids, if they're behind by the third grade, they never catch up.
Yeah.
So you're right, it's not like, it's not an issue of intervening at the high school or the middle school, it's obviously a lot earlier.
Yeah.
But the other issue, and I don't know how we, especially if we're looking at matrix moving forward, is how do we begin to set something in motion that is successful, not only with these kids falling through the cracks, but even kids that actually graduate? I was reminded just recently by a parent in the Pico neighborhood who worked her tail off through this, you know, was involved as the PTA, got involved with our schoolside councils and everything from day one. And her five kids, out of her five kids, only one of them actually got to the university. Yet she did everything that we wanted her to do. And somehow, how do we, you know, and listen, these are kids that didn't, technically didn't fall through the cracks because they actually graduated.
Yeah.
But they weren't able to get into the universities. Whether it's a state or a private.
Yeah, and we certainly even looked at those data, you know, the number of kids here from Santa Monica who then met, you know, proficiency standards for the UC system, as one example. But it does allow you to kind of look at gaps and to say, okay, what was going on between that high school to full adulthood transition? What other things were going on outside of the household? And then how can you measure what the community fabric was that kind of helped that individual transition? You can start to measure the capacity of the nonprofit organizations or other kinds of social supports that may have been needed in order to support that. You know, at least, you can't always explain everybody's sort of path, but you can certainly put a little bit more color and dimension on what's going on.
Along those lines, in your work, especially in other, you mentioned Canada, and I think you said even Seattle's been doing some pretty good stuff on the solution side. Is anybody out there doing stuff like actually doing site visits in the homes? Because a lot of times, you know, as a former classroom teacher, you know, I remember talking to my colleagues, and they didn't have a clue where these kids were coming from.
Yeah.
And I bet you in a lot of our schools, even here in Santa Monica, we have a lot of teachers that are teaching kids not understanding what they have to go through to even get homework done in a classroom.
Yeah.
Or in a home situation.
Yeah.
You know, where they're living in a one-bedroom, that's, you know, they don't, they don't have a bedroom.
Yeah.
You know, it's basically one room for the whole family kind of situation. And how do you get quiet space in something like that to do homework, for example?
Yeah, I mean, well, certainly there are efforts underway for the last several years of kind of different home visiting models that have been tested in, you know, every place from New Mexico to Appalachia. But what you're also referencing is why thinking about children as we would adults as holistic people and entities is important. So for example, some of the more progressive school districts are doing home environment assessments, whether they actually go into the home, or they ask the questions of what a child's life is like outside of eight to three, or nine to four, or whatever the school day is. It's very much akin to pediatricians now being sort of on the leading edge or trying to, of asking what the grade reports are. That academic achievement is a health outcome. So we're starting to see pediatricians, teachers, home and elements kind of connecting, but it takes work. And it first takes the recognition that a kid can't be segmented into four or five parts, that he or she has a whole life. And how do you assess that and understand sort of continuity of care across those settings? That's part of this. And certainly, well-being is not the only, but it is a framework that kind of helps you to start to think that way. Once you start to think that way, you can create processes and assessments and cultural shifts in schools and other organizations to think about kids and families in that light. Then once you do that, your choices become different, right? Your policies, your resources, your understanding of trajectories become different, and then everything ideally falls from that. So, yeah, but these are, these are the kinds of things that a lot of school districts, for example, are thinking about.
But I think you mentioned some, I think there's a big difference between asking a question of a parent or a child and actually doing a house visit.
Yeah. And it's just a function of intensity. I mean, it's a priority and a resource issue. Of course, home environment assessments are, would be the gold standard, and understanding where kids are living is the gold standard.
Thank you. Councilmember Hemrich.
As you were talking about that, it occurred to me, when I looked at the latest data collection, it looks as if it's all voluntary. So people can have their data, or can put their own data in and respond to the survey. So my first question is, can people do that more than one time, or are they limited to one time?
Well, we had a period of fielding the survey, so we would like to do it, I think, at least per annum. At one point, we've also talked about doing, you know, quicker check-ins with people. There's all sorts of technologies that can allow for that, and I think that's a natural evolution of this work. So that's just the resident survey part, which of course we have to make voluntary. The city administrative data and the other sources are hopefully more complete and robust. But, but there are ways to track community sentiment over time. This is why we're introducing the social media data and other feeds. No one data source is going to tell the entire picture. But there are communities that are starting to say, okay, well, we'll, you know, text message people three questions every other month and do a pulse point survey. There are many methods that could be used like that if a city chooses.
And on that note, I know that people have become concerned about their data and how their data is being used. So how do you, other than anonymity, strike a balance in that?
Yeah, it's a real balancing act. I mean, of course, from our perspective and from a research ethics perspective, we ensure a lot of things in terms of how we de-link identifying information, how people are notified before they consent to participate or not in a survey. But you're also up against now a real move around transparency and accountability and open data and all that. And that's a choice, I think, that each community has to make for itself in terms of what the benefits and costs are. But from a survey perspective... But from a survey perspective, we're very upfront about that sort of process of the data being available on kind of open data platforms and things like that. So we work, and we definitely clean a lot of things that are even remotely identifying to ensure that.
But, so I guess my question would be, even though it's de-linked on the open data platform, are we storing things in a way that people can feel secure that their data won't be shared?
Well, that's, I think, a question that you might want to talk about with your kind of data management and software systems. I mean, the idea of open data, if it's a full expression of open data, then you can't create that many barriers to public access to it. But there are ways that people register to then access the data so that you can monitor who's accessing it for what purpose. There are many levels of review, and this is what cities are trying to grapple with because there's a huge equity issue with open data, right? Well, then is it only certain people, maybe from Silicon Beach, are accessing the data? But, you know, Joe Smith, resident in X neighborhood, has got three barriers to get to the information about his or her community. These are real sort of, not just philosophical, but operational questions about open data. Thank you.
And a follow-up. We've been addressing the issue of security for IT. And privacy and security is a real issue, and we'll be hearing later on from Joe Fattello, our new chief information officer. That's one of the key ways in which we want to make sure that we protect the privacy. Now, most of, what Anita's talking about is most of the aggregate data simply isn't privacy matter, but making sure that we completely encrypt and protect and separate data that is used in law enforcement, which cannot be shared, which is obtained for medical purposes, which under federal law cannot be shared, as well as the kind of privacy concerns that you've raised, councilmember. We take them very seriously.
All right, well, thank you for an excellent and very informative presentation. I think now we're going to hear from our chief well-being officer.
There you go. How's that on this beautiful Saturday morning here in Santa Monica? So good, good late morning to all of you. I'm Julie Rusk, here newly in the last couple of weeks on behalf of the city manager's office in this new adventure into civic well-being, which is really taking a lot of what Anita talked about and moving it forward to the next step. So I want to tell you about a couple of things that we're doing very concretely, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Gigi Decavales Hughes, and we'll talk a little bit about the budget. So as Anita said, obviously, budgeting is a really important tool in city government and city governance where we express our values and we, and I think we're not looking at slides. There are a few pieces of hard copied paper that are floating around in front of you as well. So budgeting, we're going to talk a little bit about what we're doing as we prepare for the 1719 budget, which you'll see later this spring. I want to give you a brief update on where we are with the second round of the index that picks a little bit up on what Anita's doing, and then very briefly highlight a few of the concrete actions that we're taking as we're advancing civic well-being. So the budget. We're using this framework, as Anita talked about, and there's some photos in the staff report that show you to engage our city staff. And the first step in that is looking at all of the work we do across city departments to see what can be surfaced and understood using this framework. So the idea here is to say, we know that sort of below the radar, there's all sorts of things. I mean, the city attorney's office supports the city by a lot of important policy work, clearly, and legal work. They also do a tremendous amount of community-facing work that helps people make sure that their consumer rights are protected, they work in domestic violence. How do we lift up some of those activities and show them as they're connected with law enforcement efforts or human service efforts so that we show a more complete picture of what it is we're doing in the city? That's the preparatory work that we're doing now as city staff in advance of the budget. So inventorying programs and policies using the framework is one step. We're also in the process of identifying additional data. To Anita's point, it's not about more is better, but it's finding the right data. So as we're engaging with city departments anew on this, we're asking the question, what data do we have? We have our new chief performance officer who's recently joined the city. We have Joseph, who you'll hear from as our CIO. So we have this moment as we're preparing for the 1719 budget where we're going out, inventorying programs, and looking at the data we have. And then finally, as we're having these discussions, I think it's giving us all an opportunity to think about why we're doing what we're doing. So as we look at the programs and sort them and inventory them, there have been some great discussions that have already begun where people are really asking the question, well, how does this program in the police department, what is its primary goal? If it's about community building, how can we lift that up and be sure that we're clear about its purpose? So using the framework is a first step in our budgeting process. So the second thing I want to chat with you briefly about is the next round of the index. So as Anita mentioned, we re-fielded the resident survey this past fall. A couple of things that I think are important about this, but again, I just want to bring to your attention was, it wasn't simply a matter of putting the survey out again. What we did this time was we thought about how do we get more folks to take it? So we engaged an outreach partner to really help us go around the city and make sure we really got into various communities. And so this time, we had 1,200 more people take the survey. We got to about 3,800 people who took the survey, which was a terrific response rate. Some of the specific kinds of activities we undertook this time were things like, we had a community dinner at Calvary Baptist Church. It was a wonderful opportunity to engage with a particular segment of our community who we often don't go out and chat with. We broke bread together, we brought iPads out, people took the survey. We use the amazing resources that, you know, we all have at Virginia Avenue Park. There's some very vibrant parent groups there. So the Latino parent group in particular came together and they took the survey together and helped each other out. It was fielded in Spanish, as we mentioned. So we think these kinds of more targeted efforts where we go out and we're engaging can sort of illustrate how, it's not simply about sort of data collection over here and engagement over there, but it's about how we line these efforts up. And we had some great conversations in these environments where people were saying, now, why are you asking this? So we had the chance to really drill down to purpose. So the survey has been re-fielded. Anita and her team have gone out and will continue to go out and look at the city administrative sources of data. All of that will be combined into a new index. We're aligning more closely with the youth well-being report card work, which, as you recall, have been sort of, came up on parallel tracks, but we know that the future is about nesting these things together. So we communicate a much more integrated set of messages with our community as we work to share the data. We're going to have a scoring component with these categories or dimensions, which will help, I think, with the communication of this. I think we really understand that what we have right now is a voluminous report with a lot of data in it, and we need to work hard to communicate that. So scoring will be one way that you can expect us to advance this work. Finally, we've engaged in a really exciting partnership around data visualization and communication. Again, so much of this is about how we engage with and message what we're doing and get feedback. So we're working with a team of students from Design Matters, which is the social impact part of the Art Center of Pasadena. They just kicked off a project that will take place over the next 14 weeks. This past week, they've been out taking photographs, doing interviews with people to try and understand how some of these concepts land with real people and how we can really use this to further our engagement. So I think you can look for some interesting advancement that's coming with our partnerships with art and design professionals and students, which is really exciting. So finally, before I turn it over to Gigi, I want to talk super briefly about this Office of Civic Well-Being. And I know you've got a lot going on today, and this is not the time to go into this deeply, but it's extremely important to me on a personal and professional level and to our team that we figure out how to get this right. And doing that will be a journey. It will be input that will gather from you all and many folks in the community. Some of our key goals that I just want to lift up continue to measure. So that's some of the things we've been talking about today. Incredibly important is this engagement and mobilization. We know this community is so vibrant with many groups. We had a great climate action event yesterday. We've got all kinds of things going on. How we align and connect our community with this work is a really important part of our goals ahead. Establishing better partnerships, we've already talked about Cradle to Career, the school district, the college are incredibly important partners with the city and our NGOs and others. So how we cultivate smart partnerships for action is part of what we will all be working on together. Developing a learning culture, this is about how we learn new ways of governing and working together. So for instance, last week, we were really delighted to host a group of 50 people from the West Coast innovation teams of city government. And we hosted them here in Santa Monica. And lest you think that this idea of innovation is about just shiny new objects, we started at the OPCC Cloverfield site. We were able to showcase the partnership that this city and this council is so proud of in terms of solutions to homelessness. And John Misery gave a great tour and talked about the very real work of establishing a partnership and best practice program, how we're evolving our work on homelessness. And then we spent the afternoon learning new tools of listening and empathy. And frankly, in 2017, there's not a whole lot more important than that and tougher than that. So we sort of put this all together with some very real workshopping on how can we get smarter and better about how to engage with each other and work together for smart governance. So these are some of the kinds of things that we're looking forward to working on and really to advance your goals and be sure that we're responsive to our community. So I thank you and happy to answer any questions and turn it over to Gigi.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Rusk. Councilmembers, any questions at this point?
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then we'll move on to the finance presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, mayor and councilmembers. In front of you, you are about to be handed out just a one-page slide that has some of the high-level points of what I'm going to be talking about. Oh, is it, it's working? Okay. Okay, so what I wanted to talk to you about is how this is all going to look to the community and to you all in the budget this year. So as we mentioned, we are going through our biannual budget process this year, and this seems to be a very natural, very organic way to bring the new framework, the well-being framework, into our budget. Based on the, if you take a look at the slide that I've given you, we're talking about, we're going to basically be presenting the information, presenting our programs, presenting what the city is doing in a new way in the budget. We have a traditional approach to our budget, which is department and division-based. That will continue, but what we're doing is we're going to, that executive summary section of the budget will now be focused more on the framework. The way we're going to do that is we're going to have this, almost a standalone, what could be a standalone section that's going to be called the framework section. It's going to be a living document, an evolving document, because we, I think the most important piece right now for many of us in the city as we're trying to make this transition is that it will be incremental. We are not going to have a fully fleshed-out framework that is informing everything. We are, right now, we are creating a baseline. So this framework section first is going to basically introduce the, all the elements that are coming in, well-being, sustainability, the strategic goals that we've been talking about, and kind of talking about how we're developing this cohesive framework. Then we're going to be defining the dimensions. And this goes to what Councilmember Hemmerich was talking about, where is public safety, for example? Where is the way, the economic sustainability of our residents? In that definition section, we can be a little bit more, you know, really kind of explain what's going on. An additional piece of that is bringing up the goals that we're trying to get to within each dimension. And again, in terms of defining, we are actually going to be putting in some of our citywide projects and programs that are helping us, we believe, to move the dial towards those dimensions. So it's going to be a little bit more tangible. Instead of, you know, very conceptual, we're going to be seeing exactly what projects we feel right now we're working collaboratively on within the city to move the dial on those As I said, it's an evolving document. We are anticipating now that we will be coming back to the council as we're filling this document in with new programs, as we're developing metrics that will help us see the progress on the programs. And so at this point, we don't know if it's going to be every three months, every six months, but you will be seeing this document. And eventually, this is pretty much going to be the model for our performance management program that we are going to be, or the actual approach that we're going to be taking to city operations and to the city budget. Otherwise, within the budget book, we're going to continue this type of, we'll cascade this through the department pages, the framework. And where are our departments right now, the department pages talk about the department mission, describe the divisions and what they do. And what, where we used to have work plans, work plan-based goals, objectives, and benchmarks, we're going to now be talking more about the dimensions. So we are going to be actually getting to the point of talking about our core competency operations that are, again, helping to move the dial, not just the special projects or the big projects that we are dealing with on a short-term basis or, you know, they're kind of one-off projects. These are just the basic services that we are and our employees are working on a daily basis. So we're seeing this, as I said, it's an incremental approach, and it's, I think, going to be becoming more and more important to us. As you remember from our discussion on Tuesday night, resources are becoming more limited. And I think this is really going to help us make decisions with a little bit more information and we'll have the data to be able to allocate our resources into the future. And that's, if you have any questions, I'm.
Yes, I believe Councilmember Vasquez has a question.
As you mentioned, our resources are beginning more limited. And I know we've had this conversation, and I've had it with staff besides you, about are we going to begin, as you're looking at your new benchmarks and projects for the future, looking at how we can take some of our money that we bank and start investing it locally with our local banks? Because in light of what's happening, you know, Wells Fargo is, you know, while we bank a lot with them, they've done some pretty shady things in our community. Yet we still reward these folks. And it's not like they're giving back a whole lot to this community. Whereas if you put it into a local commercial bank or California, where's the bank in California and several of these other now independents that have actually opened up in Santa Monica, I think we get a bigger bank for our buck here locally for our nonprofits.
Well, there are certain things that we always seem to be looking at when we're going for banking, who's going to be doing our banking operations. We're a big city. We have a very large portfolio and we have very many transactions. And those are all the things that we take a look at when we issue our request for proposals for banks. We are going to be getting ready to look at, to do a new request for proposal process over the next few months because our contract with Wells Fargo is going to be up soon. So these are things that we are going to be taking a look at. And, you know, the, what you're talking about, but also making sure that whatever bank we do work with is also providing security for the city's funds. So we do have to weigh all of that.
But at the end of the day, all banks are secured, aren't they?
There's a different level of how money is collateralized, and they need to have the, a sufficient capacity to collateralize the funds that we have, against the funds that we have. So if we have a large portfolio, they need to have pretty much as much as what we have in our portfolio, which is $700 million.
in our portfolio, which is $700 million, they need to have that available in collateral. And not all banks have that much money. The big ones do.
Too big to fail, right? Now, what do we do about scattering it, though? I mean, there's several, right, I hear what you're saying, that you obviously have, the big ones have larger collateral assurances, but if you're talking about three or four smaller banks, and not, we're not looking at large amounts here.
Right, and this is something that we are considering looking at in our, as we do the request for proposal, is to see where it makes sense to potentially break out some of these, some of the services that we offer. Now, for the, you know, when we're writing checks or writing our, you know, especially paychecks, that part needs to stay together in terms of efficiencies, in terms of security, just to make sure that our accounting is all in one place. We have maybe some other programs that we could potentially consider splitting off if it makes sense. So that is something that we are going to be taking a look at.
Thank you.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Hi, Gigi, and thanks for your report. You talked about core competency operations.
Yes.
Which is simply the day-to-day operations of each of our departments.
Yes.
And how will that be fit into the framework? If you can explain. In other words, are we going to be looking at customer satisfaction at the end? What is it that, how are we going to look at the results of the metrics that are part of the framework?
Do you, so are you saying what types of metrics will we have?
Yes.
Well, this is something that we're going to be working with our chief performance officer over time, and this is why we're saying it's going to take a little bit of time to understand what the goals are, and then based on our core competency and core competency operations, how those, how we see those translating and what we actually need to measure to reach a goal. So we don't know if it's going to be, in one case, it might be customer service, in one case, it might be, you know, the number of streets we've paved in a certain amount of time, which obviously ultimately is customer service. But, so those are some of the things that we're going to be taking a look at, and it is going to be, you know, not the easiest, fastest process, I would say, but something we'll be working on.
So would it, I'm just trying to understand, so would it be how many permits are processed a day, or how many audits of water use have been done, you know, a month? Or is that the sort of thing we're talking about doing?
It could be, well, there are different types of measures. And now I'm getting into our CPO's area of expertise, but I'll just say a little bit, and, you know, with the qualifier that I'm not the CPO, there are output measures, which are the basic, you know, widgets, right? The, you know, there are outcome measures, and there are efficiency measures. It depends on what you're trying to do and what type of measure you're going to use. Output is obviously the simplest. When you're getting into efficiency or outcome measures, that's where you're actually taking a look at the, more of the ultimate outcome of something, or something that's a little bit more based on something you want to show, progress being made.
Thank you.
So, again, I don't know what measures we're going to be using at this time, but I can guarantee you that it will probably not be just output measures, because those are pretty simple. We need those measures to build on the other piece, you can't do one without the other. So what I'm anticipating is that we'll have kind of a, several series of measures and programs and projects and programs and operations that lead to each goal or outcome.
So going back to Councilmember Vasquez's initial question about home visits, for instance, I mean, would, apart from, let's say we had such a program, which I'm not sure we have, but if we had such a program, how would we measure the outcome and the efficiency of something like that? I mean, are you the wrong person to ask?
Yeah, I think I'm.
Let me take a crack at it, Councilmember.
Oh, yeah.
So, again, it's not new, and we've, we've had versions of it. For example, in our big blue bus, a key issue is on-time performance. That's, that's an important measure for the customers to know when, how often the buses are coming, and it's analogous to on-time performance in the airline industry. Critical measure, but it can be broken down, right? It can be broken down both to individual bus drivers, it can be broken down to shifts, it can be broken down to hours of the day, it can be broken down by supervisor, and all of those can be useful data. In other words, the supervisor says, well, gee, I've got a lot, I've got a lot of, I've got a lower on-time performance measure on my shift, what can I do to improve performance on my shift? Individual bus driver can see, well, I've had these things, and we can then do some problem-solving around that. If we take a look at it by hour, we might see, okay, we've got, we've got some real problems during the rush hour, as an obvious common sense issue that would play into it. So what can we do during rush hour to improve our on-time performance? And there may be some counterintuitive things, or at least less obvious things, right? I mean, okay, we can't get rid of traffic, but maybe as we, as we are now doing, we shift people away from putting money in the meter, which takes a while, and they're fumbling in their pockets, and increase the number of tap cards. So that might be another measure, which we then say, okay, the percentage of people using tap cards is now something we're going to measure in order to improve our on-time performance. So you have kind of a suite of measures that allow you to drive that on-time performance in the right direction, month on month, year on year, and see real improvements. And then you can also measure customer satisfaction, right, which is in part cleanliness, in part safety, in part customer service by the motor coach operator, and in part on-time performance. And you can even break those out and ask people about each of those things. So that's the way you build a system. And over time, things that become automatic, right, if you're always getting five stars on something, you're probably going to drop that measure, and you're going to look at a different measure that might give you room for improvement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis has a question.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions. So it seems to me that when we're talking about this new framework, one of the, maybe the low-hanging fruit, is the ability to start talking about the totality of programs. So, for example, we have a wide range of youth programs, which do include, by the way, home visits for younger families with younger children, but we don't have a way right now, if someone were to say, how much money does the city spend on programs related to youth? People would call Ms. Rusk and say, and she would then call you, and we would go through the budget, because some of those programs have to do with our relationship with the college or the school district, some of those have to do with Crest. So, at least in the short term, one of the things we can do is really capture the suite of programs regardless of where they reside within the city. Would that be one of the things we'd be looking at?
Yes, we would capture the programs. At this point, for this budget, we don't anticipate that we're going to be able to capture the dollars.
And that's fine, but I'm just saying that's the direction we're headed.
Yes, yes.
So, for example, if you're interested in how, how much is this city spending on housing people? At some point in this framework, we'll be able to get that number relatively easily, because you do have some programs that are in housing and economic development, but you also have some that are in planning. You know, you have the rent control board expenditure. So, so that's part of the idea, is to really get a handle on, you know, given our priorities, where are we spending our money, and make sure that our money spend aligns with our priorities. I mean, it seems to me that's one of the easier things to do, rather than trying to measure outputs in terms of satisfaction or something, although we definitely want to get there. But in the short term, we can at least begin to really get a more accurate assessment of where we're putting our dollars. Would that be one of the things we'll get from the framework?
Yes, at some point, we will be getting there.
And then it seems to me that with regard to things like outcomes as opposed to just expenditures, some of that's obviously going to depend, and this is where we get to the integration issue, is the outcomes that are going to be measured are the metrics that we set. We're not just going to start, I mean, in other words, this is, the budget department's going to integrate with our well-being office, which is going to integrate with Cradle to Career or whatever, and as we start to set these metrics with our priorities. So it's not as if we expect you or someone else to just start making things up. We're going to, as a community, decide what outputs we care about, whether it's on-time bus service or cleanliness, or number of kids who are graduating from high school or going to college, however we want those, or are prepared for kindergarten. So we'll set, you don't need to set those metrics, I guess is the point I'm making. You will use the metrics that will come out of the well-being index and our other efforts in that regard, is that right?
Yes, that's the beauty of this framework, is we're going to have some metrics that actually mean something. In the past, we've had a lot of measures, and, you know, many years ago, we had many, many measures, but they didn't necessarily mean anything, and we, we're going to be a lot more efficient with our measures and a lot more effective with our measures.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for the city manager, and that's this. Are we coordinating our efforts in connection with well-being with the school and the school system and the college?
We certainly have done that in the building of the well-being index. What we'll embark upon now is share with them, I had the opportunity to meet just last week with the president of Santa Monica College and the new superintendent to welcome Dr. Droudi. So we'll, we'll be sharing with them this framework, and that's one of the next steps for really community success.
Thank you for that report. I think we're going now throwing it over to the city manager.
So thank you for your patience, your attention, and your engagement with our first three speakers. Thank you, Anita, for sharing a national perspective. Thank you, Julie, for your pioneering work and your great team, and all the outreach that's been done in building the well-being index. And thank you, Gigi, and the budget team for the way in which that department is really taking leadership. This building of a framework and incorporating into the budget is really a way to pull all of the many efforts that we're embarked upon. You will recall at our last retreat, the real challenge was how to, how to take all the many things we do on a daily basis, the daily operations, and it's a very complicated time and a very complicated government. Everything from, from the cost of workers' comp claims to the satisfaction of parents in recreation classes, those are all things that we care about, and we care about deeply. How do we begin to simplify and align them? And again, there's really, they really fall into three baskets, what we do. There's the day-to-day operations of our services that people count on 24 hours a day, seven days a week to keep this community healthy and green and safe. There's also the efforts we're doing on these strategic goals, to make a strategic difference into the future, to close the airport, to create a new model of mobility, to preserve affordability in our community, to promote a climate of learn and thrive, and to take a regional approach to this increasingly serious homelessness crisis. So the third basket is, how do we effectively make the government work better to produce, continue to produce viscerally sustainable, outstanding results every day in the services that residents rely upon and appreciate and need? Second, how do we move the city forward on those strategic priorities that you've identified as a city council? And so the next steps for us is with this draft framework in place, which will come as part of the two-year biennial budget that I'll submit to you as city manager later on this spring, we're continuing to map out how our daily operations, much of the conversation this morning has talked about the well-being dimensions out into the community, but a lot of things we do every day in our library and our police department and our fire department go directly to well-being. So we want to connect those things up, make it clearer what the connections are, all the way to the front lines, so that people on the front lines. One of the most, you know, famous stories, it's, it may very well be anecdotal, it may be, it may be apocryphal, but, but I think it's significant, particularly, some people have been watching this latest movie, Hidden Figures. When President Johnson first visited the Kennedy Space Center after becoming president, he supposedly ran into a janitor, and he asked the janitor, well, what do you do? And he said, well, I'm putting a man on the moon, right? Because he understood his connection to keeping that environment dust-free and clean, and how critical that was to eventually putting an American on the moon and achieving the goals of the country. So that's what we want to do, is have everyone on our staff and everyone in the community understand how their contribution as a volunteer, as a commissioner, as an elected official, as a staff member, how it all contributes to the community's well-being. So we also had another national expert, Julia Novak, former city manager, president of the Novak Group. She led a session for all of our senior department heads and division managers and the budget staff, who actually work on the budget, taking a look at a couple of other cities in the country that have gone down the similar path of trying to build a comprehensive framework. And we've also moved forward to fill two key positions that are integral to this that you approved earlier this year. The first is our chief performance officer. Tim Dodd comes to us from Massachusetts, where he was part of state government and actually worked with 50 different municipalities to set up similar efforts, and again, encouraged those to provide technical assistance, and was most recently the performance manager for the city of Baltimore, which probably has the most robust and longstanding of these comp stat metrics programs. So I'd just like to introduce Tim, so you get to see him, and he can make a few comments about his initial impressions and his priorities as he sets to work here.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, thank you, thank you, city manager, and it's still a good morning, I think, for a few more minutes, so just thank you for the opportunity. I've been here, just finished my third week. I've spent most of it in several meetings, getting to know folks. Staff couldn't have been nicer and more accommodating to me as I've learned to, learned this new role and learned the city. As we've kind of been talking about today, the main responsibility that I'm going to have is to work to develop a program that basically allows us to use data to drive results to achieve outcomes that we've been talking about this morning. So in the next few months, I'm going to be working to develop a roadmap that's going to include several different things, how we're going to communicate about the program, how we're going to engage both internal and external stakeholders, how we are going to develop what's kind of been talked a little bit about today, a stat program, which is basically how we're going to use the data to evaluate it, to determine whether or not we're on the right track in terms of achieving the outcomes that are being set. And so it is something, as Manager Paul mentioned, that I've, that I've done for about five years now in two different areas, both for a state and a municipality. I'm just very excited, had a chance before I moved out here into the cross-country to read a lot about the great things that you've done already in terms of sustainability and wellness, and really, it's been very invigorating for me over the last few weeks to learn about some of the different things that you want to work on, that you want to achieve, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity and look forward to working with all of you.
Councilmembers, any questions?
So Tim will be a resource and a partner to our departments. We'll start first as, as we've made clear on the strategic goals, that's really your top priority, so that's where we want to start. And then we'll be working with all the departments to build on what they're already doing. Again, many of our departments are already measuring project management, capital, project performance, individual, but we want to make this a citywide effort.
Councilmember Himmelrich, did you have a question?
Well, I'm from Baltimore, so welcome.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So I, I'm guessing in Baltimore, you were more focused on collecting the data and less focused on using it in a meaningful way?
So I think with performance management, it really, everything I've read really indicates that it does take several years to create a program. So I think really we're at the stage right now of really trying to build out the program. And then the ultimate goal with any kind of performance management system is that once you've established the baselines, once you've created the program, to then use it to manage. So City Stat in Baltimore really has been around since about 1997, so it's definitely gone through different stops and starts depending on, you know, who's basically been in the mayor's seat and what their priorities were. But yeah, but it is, it is still going. There are 17 different agencies in the city that are stated. I definitely think there are examples of how data is being used there to manage and make decisions.
Did you say 17 agents?
Did you say 17 agencies are stated?
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
Yeah, I got it. No, I understand it, just I've never heard it used.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's okay. So, based on what you saw there, where do you think our most prime areas are for focus as we dive into this?
Well, I think the most important thing that I've learned, doing this again in two different locations, is the importance of alignment, and the importance of making sure that once outcomes and major goal priorities are set for the organization, that they're aligned, as Anita meant to use the word cascaded, through the organization. So I think that's the most important thing, is that once, you know, we move forward with this framework, that we really work to make sure that the different projects that we're working on, different things that different departments are, are really aligned and that it's integrated. Because I think that's, that's an area where some performance management programs, I think, struggle, is if there's different pieces that really aren't connected. And so I really think that connection is the most important part, the most important thing I've learned.
You mean because departments are siloed and not looked, and is that what you mean?
To an extent, or that, you know, you have, let's say, outcomes that are related to the budget, but they're not necessarily connected to the day-to-day operations of a department. So I think what we're trying to do right now, as Gigi mentioned, you know, developing the framework really as the basis for the budget, but then using it really as the blueprint, so to speak, to launch a lot of the other performance initiatives, all tied to the well-being index.
Thank you.
So, councilmembers, at this point, we're going to see if there's any public comment. Do we have some?
Actually, we have just one more piece, if you don't mind.
Oh, well, okay.
So I just, I'm sorry, Mayor. I wanted to introduce our chief information officer, Joseph Chavatello, to talk a little bit about the role of data. We're going to recruit for a chief data officer, but a partner in that will, of course, be our information services department to spearhead the citywide effort to make sure we use the right data in the right ways, that we, as councilmember Hemrich, raise the issue that we protect privacy, that we make open data more accessible and more of it. We optimize the use of our data, so we get the right data to make the right decisions that allow us to facilitate data-driven decision-making. And the innovation, as Anita said, it creates the opportunity for greater innovation to make government work better. Joe?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council. I just have a few comments about data. I think there's three aspects I'd like to call out with regards to this work for well-being, as well as for our budget, and that is, I think we need to first think about the data we already have, the extant data that we have, and we're not unlike any other organization in that we probably have too much data. We don't suffer from a lack of it, we have a lot of it, but we're not necessarily making it actionable. So one of our challenges is to make sure that we can access this data, which is in a number of silos, integrate it, and make it actionable. The next aspect that I like to think about is the new data that we can acquire. And because of technology, and a lot of cellular and mobile technology, we have the ability to acquire data that's very different than the type of data we've had before. And that is oftentimes the data that's available to us from cell phones, mobile phones, from our citizens moving throughout the city. So the question is, that gives us the ability to collect a different type of information, and how can we use that data in the service of what we do? And then the third piece, I think was alluded to a little bit earlier, the idea that we need to make this open and transparent, at the same time balancing the needs of security. So, you know, one of our charges is to make sure that we can make all of this data transparent to anyone in our community, while at the same time ensuring its integrity, and also the security and privacy of that data. So those are the three things that I think I'd just like to highlight, that would have impact on what we're talking about today. Ultimately, the importance of all this is, if we think about the communications pyramid of data, information, and knowledge, data's the building block of all this. So if we can have good data, then hopefully we can create good information, facts, achieve knowledge, and ultimately wisdom. And to me, the well-being index is very much wisdom at the top, using all of this information and data that we acquire. So, and of course, as I think the city manager said earlier, if we can measure it, we can change it, and that's really what all this is about with regards to data.
Thank you, and I think that's the first time you've come to speak to the councils since you started your job, so official and belated welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis has a question for you.
So, one of the things I think that makes the collection of data exciting is not just having the data for data's sake, but that, in this day and age, we can really get granular about the data. So, for example, if we want to know which parts of our city are doing better in terms of making sure that people are economically secure, we can say, in this zip code, people feel very economically secure, in this zip code, they don't. And what that does is let us then drive our resources where they need to be. It also seems to me, though, that one of the great things we can do with data is create a sense of accountability, so that, once we see the problem, and then we direct resources, we can measure whether or not we're actually having an impact. So, is that, it seems, I know you're going to hire a data officer, but I'm hoping that as we start to collect this data, it really creates a sense of accountability in the community, so the community can see, here was a problem we identified, here's where we spent money, and here's where we at least had some impact on the problem, if not completely eliminated. Is that the sort of thing we're going to be doing?
Absolutely. I think all of this helps to inform accountability and being able to come up with objective fact to speak to what we're doing. So, absolutely, and that's, that's what I'm saying, you know, we have a lot of data now. We may have the answers to a lot of questions that we're asking, but we haven't started to mine that data and use it to answer those questions. I think we're going to start to do that, yeah.
Just for the record, I appreciate your use of the word "facts," we need more of those. Thank you.
I would agree.
Mayor, just to wind up and then turn it back to the council for any additional discussion. We summarized the effort we've embarked upon. You have been, you, the council, have been involved in this really from the beginning, and we appreciate deeply your support and understanding. This will also affect how we organize the city manager's department. The council audit subcommittee recently had a report from our internal auditor, looked at some of the challenges and risks going forward, said that this is a big, important effort, and the city manager's office needs to be organized to be able to continue to provide day-to-day supervision for daily operations, but also manage your strategic goals and these initiatives. So, without any additional costs, we're taking a look at some things we'll bring you in the new budget, to better align the city manager's office to move in this direction. And that probably involves a recalibration of the current assistant city manager and deputy city manager roles to better move both of those forward. So, I look forward to continuing the work. I want to conclude with one more thank you. There've been a tremendous number of people involved in our city staff on this, the team that went to the Louisville Performance Summit and got a chance to look at a performance stat program in actual operation, and ask questions, and bring back some of those insights. We've had great, great help from all the folks that I've acknowledged earlier in my office. I want to particularly thank two people, besides our communications team, who also played an incredible role in getting this out into the, into the organization, so that everyone is in on this. And those are Danielle Noble, who drafted today's agenda report, collaborating with me, and has really been a spark plug of this whole effort from the outset, and Christopher Smith, assistant to the city manager, who is just an invaluable resource. But again, in mentioning those folks, I don't want to take away from all of the many other folks that have made a real contribution, but I don't want to leave Gigi in the finance team, Julie in the well-being team, Debbie in the communications team, and our city manager's team from specifically being acknowledged here today.
All right. I didn't quite get the answer whether we had any chits for public comment. We do not. Then, councilmembers, we're on to the phase of council discussion and direction. I think the primary question before us is whether we enthusiastically endorse this direction of a framework for performance management and data-driven decision-making, or we have some reservations or comments or other thoughts to add to the proposal to take the city in this new direction that's before us. Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Well, I'll be brief, because I think this was a wonderful presentation, and I look forward to really seeing this all put into action. But I want to make two points, and one is the one that I just mentioned, which has to do with accountability. I think that one of the things in this community that happens is, we have a lot of programs, but we aren't able to tell people how effective those programs are. And so the ability to have the data to say, "We identified this problem, we spent money on the problem," or "We did this to address the problem," doesn't have to be money-related, "but now look at the results that we have. We've reduced homelessness, we've increased high school graduation or college attendance, we've made that U-curve about housing instability for younger people, we've made that more shallow." However it is, it gives us an opportunity, particularly since a lot of people in this community keep talking about how big our budget is, and why are we doing this, that, and the other thing, to really show that the money we're spending is money well-spent, and I think that's really important. But equally important, in my mind anyway, is, I'm hoping that what this data collection and analysis and emphasis on well-being will do is lead us to more innovation and boldness, that, once we start to really get a handle on what is it that we're doing, what is it that we need to do, where is our community not performing as well as we want it to do, that, instead of sort of nibbling around the edges, which is sometimes important to do, but that we'll actually really talk about reallocating resources in a bold and innovative way, looking at programs that might be unfamiliar to us, that may have worked in other areas. But I think the important thing about this is not just, oh, look, we have some data, and look what we did with the data, but that the policies that come from looking at the data are really meaningful, you know, and I think municipalities by their nature are sort of conservative institutions. We have a tendency to, you know, not want to upset the apple cart sometimes, and I think this gives us a chance to turn that apple cart upside down, and really say, "Look at what we're doing here, this is really different." And we've seen it work in other communities and in different kinds of programs. But in smaller communities like Santa Monica, it's even more difficult, I think, sometimes, in part because people feel so connected to this program or that program, and the idea that maybe this program isn't the right one now, it may have been the right program 30 years ago, but it's not the right one now. So I would just, the message I would want to convey to staff is, I think this is exactly the direction we need to take, but that I think we need to broaden our horizons, be innovative, be bold, not be afraid to just sort of wipe the table clean and say, "If we were going to build this kind of program from the ground up, what would it look like today?" Instead of trying to fix a program we started 30 years ago, that we're sort of trying to tinker around and make a little better. So, that would be my comments. I think it's a great idea, I look forward to having this data and being able to use it in the many different ways we've discussed, and I want to thank staff, because I know this is a lot of effort, and I know a lot of people have their hands in it, as the city manager said. I just want to thank everyone, not just for doing this work, but for their commitment to it, because if we don't have commitment to this, all the way down the line, then it's not going to work. You know, this has to be something we're committed to, it has to be something staff is committed to, and I think it has to be a constant drumbeat, as I said, even in every staff report we get, just like we say, "This is where the money's coming from." We have to say, "And this is how it affects the community's well-being." And sometimes it may be a little bit, and sometimes it may be a lot. But I think that it has to be a constant drumbeat from us about how important this work is, and how it really is going to improve the lives of the people who live and work and visit here. I really think that this is, you know, about making us a better, stronger, more resilient community, but that's not something we can sort of do in a one-and-done way today. It has to be something that we infuse within our bones, if you will, on almost every day and every action we take. So, thank you, and I look forward to working with everyone to do that.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the first council member to arrive this morning, councilmember O'Connor. We're making history of multiple fronts today. After her will be councilmember Vasquez, and then councilmember McCuey.
She must have slapped her.
No, 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 they sent the posse out to corral me and bring me here. I wasn't sure I was here on time. Just want to start out, part of the framework, or what's in the overall, the strategic goals of the city, I just want to address. We had the retreat, we discussed five strategic goals for the city, and just want to note that one of them, securing local control of the city land occupied by the Santa Monica Airport, was achieved today, I believe. Again, that will allow us to shorten the runway immediately and preclude folks such as Jeff Sweet and others getting a foothold in the airport. That also means that, while we have that local control of the airport, we can also concurrently focus resources and more resources on some of these other, these other areas, than just continuing to fight and expend those resources. In terms of the well-being framework here and the outlook, I'm, one of the things I would say concerns me, but I think we need to make sure we continue to recognize sustainability and climate change, because you're not going to be having well-being if you're, you know, have that existential threat that we have out there on climate change, if we're not reducing greenhouse gas emissions, if we're seeing temperatures rise, if we're seeing the climate change in Santa Monica, we're seeing more, more extreme weather events. I mean, we have the chief resilience officer, not just for earthquakes, but for other kinds of things. So I think we need to continue to marry that sustainability and climate with the well-being framework, and the work that is being done by our Office of Environmental Sustainability. Again, you're not going to have, will you go outside and, you know, your placemaking, how is that impacted by climate changes? Well, how is people's ability, their health impacted by it? How about their ability to make a living? Maybe it would mean new economic opportunities, but not necessarily ones we want to see, ones that would be doing things to adapt in a negative way to climate changes. And people's ability to learn is impacted. So I don't think we can step away from, again, sustainability and climate being really, really key part of this. So I hope that that is reflected more in this framework as we go forward. And the other thing, it was raised by some of my colleagues in the questions, the issues of equity, that's tied to resilience, equity, but also, I think it's, oh, just want to say a little bit more about the strategic goals. The strategic goals includes the new modes of mobility, something like that, new ways of looking at new models for mobility. And I tie that in because 65% of the greenhouse gas emissions that are generated by the city are in the transportation sector. So making sure as we go through this well-being framework and this exercise too, that things such as the pedestrian action plan, the bike plan, how we're doing on those, that those are getting implemented, and other new innovations that we come up with about mobility, that that really has to, has to be a very strong part of that. Because that also ties into people's, people's health and ability to get to jobs, ability to get to their health and care providers, ability to just meet with each other, is how you get around, and, I mean, things such as Vision Zero and Active Transportation, they all relate. So I think those are very strong elements that need to be implemented and part of this. And then finally, there was some discussion earlier, I think the gender equity, we're seeing a resurgence of folks recognizing that gender equity is an issue, that gender equity and placemaking is, especially in other aspects of the framework, I think is very, very important. I hope we see a greater focus on, again, gender equity in this. So, those are my observations.
Thank you for your thoughts, councilmember Vasquez.
Yes, I pretty much agree with several of the thoughts that have already been put out. I guess for me, one of the key things, and I'm glad to see that, not to put a little bit more pressure on Julie Ross, but I'm glad to see that she's over in the city manager's office now to kind of spearhead this, at least on this coordination piece, because I think we've done so much, and there's a lot of great programs in the city, and we've done so many studies. done so many studies that in many cases, you know, are just usually just shelved, and the implementation and looking for the solutions, I think has been really one of the key things for me moving forward. And I'm feeling really a little bit more comfortable and confident that that's actually going to finally get off the shelves, these things that we've been doing over the years, and actually start implementing some of this stuff. And the fact that we have some new leadership, both at the college now, as well as the school district, and I know our city manager mentioned that he's already had his first initial meeting with the two entity, other institutions in the city. I think there's a lot of synergy between the three groups or bodies in the city that we can do a lot more, especially with the school district and the community college, to kind of clear that when we talk about that pipeline, you know, coming through from childcare all the way up into the university level. So I'm feeling a little bit more comfortable with that. And I guess the other big thing for me is that as we're moving more, you know, housing's obviously a real big issue for a lot of our folks that work in the city but don't live here. And just moving forward with some of the issues that were just mentioned about mobility, I'm feeling pretty good about some of the things that we're starting to make those connections with those folks that are not fortunate enough to live in our city, but yet do work in our city, and just making sure that they're able to get in and out of here at a very affordable rate. And hopefully, moving them a little bit closer to the West Side, maybe not necessarily in Santa Monica. But as we begin to work also with our neighboring partners, other cities in the area like Culver City, Beverly Hills, and our West Side City Council for LA, I think we, those are some of the things, and I know Julie's been active with many of those folks on a more regional level, as we begin to address some of these problems, similar to, I guess, what we did with the homeless problem. You know, I remember in the 90s, that being such a hot button. And I think once our staff and we got folks from around, outside of the city of Santa Monica involved with it, it seemed to really take it to a next level for Santa Monica, to the point that I don't see it as such a major issue. While it is still a burning issue for a lot of us here on the council, it's not something that I feel like we're confronted with every day as much as we did back in the 90s. And I'm hoping we can do the same thing now as we move in the other areas of housing, as well as our educational goals.
Councilmember McEwen.
The lapel button that I chose to wear for today's study session is unfortunately very small, although the concept is very large. I don't think even Tony can read this, but what it says is, "Talk data to me." For centuries, cities have relied on instinct and good intentions to come up with programs that benefit the residents of our cities. And now with this program for the first time, we start to have some real quantifiable, verifiable, objective facts to base our decisions on and to evaluate the effectiveness of the programs that we're doing. And I think that that is hugely important. But I also think that there is a role for heart, as well as for head, in evaluating the data that we do gather. And I would hope that as we move forward and allocate resources to the issues that we identify through the compilation and evaluation of data, that we employ our hearts in putting those resources in two particular areas. One is where the need is the greatest, and the other is where the impact is the greatest. The need greatest, well, that would be things like housing for seniors who are limited income and people with disabilities. Where the need is just core to living, not just well-being, but to living. And the impact greatest, well, I think, that's education, that's youth, that's where the money invested in young people, and especially very young people today, will pay us back many times over in the future. So I think what we have here is the opportunity for a mindful blend of head and heart, and I hope that's how we go forward.
We have not heard from either Councilmember O'Day or Himmrich, who, Councilmember Himmrich is waving her hand. Please.
So I think change is hard for everybody, but I think change becomes easier if the path to change is a proven path, or a path that you can demonstrate will actually end with a result that's better. And I think that this approach will help us make positive changes that the people who live here, the people who work here, staff, the council, this will be change, I think, that everybody will be able to believe in because it will be change that we're documenting has a positive result. Now, that said, I do think, and I've said this before, that there, we have a tendency to treat Santa Monica as a Petri dish and to embark on new programs, oh, sorry, new programs without really thinking about what the result will be, and end up in unfortunate circumstances without meaning to. And I say all the time, and I'm going to say again, that I think that with all of this and with the data collection, not with the framework or the data collection itself, but rather with the measurement and the change, that we have pilot programs on projects that could become entrenched without us meaning them to become entrenched and yet have a negative effect. So I do think we need to do pilots, both within the framework, what we're measuring, what we're looking at. As our city manager said, if we get all five stars on something, we should move on. And we also need to have pilots in terms of identifying issues that we maybe haven't identified, despite the complexity and depth of our data points. Ms. Rusk talked to me a couple weeks ago about a data point that shocked her and frankly shocked me, and needs more work because it was so shocking. And she doesn't even remember, I can see, but I remember. And I also am really concerned with privacy. I am really concerned about the privacy of everyone in our city, of our employees, of people who work here, because privacy, I'm afraid, in the next four years, is going to be a challenge in terms of identifying factors. At the same time, you're collecting data that seeks to encourage people to reveal as much as possible. We also have a problem in storing that data and fielding demands for that data from other actors. And I think we need to be constantly aware of that. And we need to also think about whether we need to maintain the data beyond the initial capture and recording point, so in terms of continuity. I'm not saying that we don't, but I think we need to think carefully about how we are going to protect the privacy of our residents, of our employees, and everybody in the city. Finally, I really like Councilmember McEwen's point about the focus on where's the need and where's the impact. And I think that we need, in that effort, to be looking at what other cities have done, similar cities or not similar cities, to determine that needs in an unexpected area were great and the impact was low cost and high yield. And that's really, and I'm not suggesting that only low-cost impacts need to be looked at, but high-yield impacts definitely need to be looked at carefully. And we need a lot of return on our investment in this new technology. So that said, I think it's a great plan. I think that we need to be careful going forward, but I look forward to seeing how it comes.
Councilmember O'Day.
I don't have a lot to add here. We have a great staff team, and I know that we'll be able to use this framework to refocus the good work that we're doing towards this well-being framework. And I have every confidence we'll be able to achieve those things.
So I too don't have a lot to add. I think this is a great step forward for the city, particularly based on what we heard Tuesday, and as we're approaching a time of, you know, diminishing resources, our ability just to spend to solve problems. I think this is a great tool for us to learn how to be more efficient and to focus those resources where they'd be most effective in producing the outcomes that we desire in the city. So I think it's great work. I wholly endorse this. Unless anybody has, Mr. Lawrence has something to add.
Yeah, I just want to say that this is an area where action is moving ahead of the law. And as a city that gets inundated, I use that word deliberately, sometimes with Public Records Act requests, as we move forward with collecting data, certainly we will, and this is in response to some of, to Councilmember Himmrich's concerns about privacy, we'll certainly work with everybody involved with as best we can with protecting privacy, even as we have to make available any number of data collection items that we may have. That's it.
All right. Well, seeing nobody else wanting to say anything at this point. Oh, Councilmember O'Connor.
Right. So, yeah, I was gonna say, with the data, I guess some of the issue will be what is in the data about individuals versus what is aggregate data. So aggregated data that has been stripped of identifying factors, that say 8% or X number of people say they feel this way, that can be maintained for comparison purposes to other, in other years versus individual data points. And I know that organizations like RAND and certainly academic research institutions have very strict protocols about anonymity as it's tied to collection from individuals. I guess that's where that intersection of what cities versus, you know, and that kind of data collection.
That's correct. And we've had, we, I mean, city attorney's office has met with other people in the city government to deal with establishing protocols that would assist in protecting privacy.
Right, and we'll continue, we'll continue to do that. So I just want to turn to city staff, because I guess I'd like to get a little feedback on my comments about, I mean, how are we going to integrate sustainability and climate into this? I don't want, I'm hoping that that part of the organization does not suddenly get lost or moved away because, you know, it really is not articulated here. And then, in addition to that, how is this going to be inculcated into the different levels of people working in city government? How are they going to learn and become part of this concept of well-being?
Sure, two great questions. We've been very focused on integrating sustainability into this framework. And I'm going to ask Dean Cubani to talk a little bit more about the personal efforts he's been making with the well-being team. I would, it's highly noticeable, and Councilmember Himmrich raised a similar issue about are these five dimensions of well-being the own, you know, the be-all and end-all? That's really what you, we're looking to you for guidance and direction. As we catalog what we're doing against these five dimensions, we, that may plow up some things that we'll bring to you. Certainly, we expect for one thing, there probably is a catch-all category that will apply internally to our city's functions. We, you've all talked about how we make this work inside. So we'll probably have a dimension that's really for us, that looks down into the organization rather than out into the community. But Dean, you've been actively involved, first of all, in being a pioneer, in setting metrics, measuring metrics, reporting those metrics out to the community, and achieving results as a result of having those specific metrics. We have some very ambitious metrics going forward. We want to get to water self-sufficiency. We want to continue to reduce carbon emissions in our community. We want to continue to eliminate waste in our community. So how does that fit in with the well-being work, as Councilmember O'Connor has asked?
I'd have to say it's a really good question, and it's one that we've been struggling with. And as you're familiar with, council adopted our Sustainable City Plan 23 years ago now, which essentially represented a pretty comprehensive framework to do just what we're talking about today. It's providing data to help make the council make decisions about not only improving people's lives now, but also these long-range things. We've certainly, with the well-being index, have really focused that even more so than the Sustainable City Plan, on people's lives in the city and improving their well-being. I don't have an answer for you today on how we elegantly tie sustainability into that. While we've been working very closely with Julie's team and the well-being folks about that, I do agree that with the current well-being framework as it stands right now, it does seem to miss a lot of these more long-range, particularly environmental sustainability impacts. And fortunately, Anita at RAND has been working with, one of our task force members is their Rob Lempert, who works on climate change. And we are planning to sit down to figure out how to mesh these together so that we can really integrate what we're reporting on sustainability and well-being together to the community, since they're definitely really equally important in Santa Monica. So I don't have an easy answer for you right now, but I know that we're, we have been working hard on trying to make this fit together, and we're going to continue to do that, and we'll be reporting back to you.
Thank you.
My thought I would add to Dean's point is, there are already immense ways that we can kind of amplify the measure areas in each of the dimensions. So, you know, place and community and learning and economic opportunity all have places for putting in the carbon neutrality measure, or anything around deep decarbonization, if the city goes that way, to kind of environmental stewardship, to climate justice-related measures, which are not necessarily part yet of your Sustainable Cities Plan, but could be included in well-being. In fact, it actually gives a better place for that intersection of people, place, and those choices. So I think it very much can be reflected at the, there are sub-dimensions and measure areas within each of these dimension buckets that can have very strong sort of green metrics, environmental metrics, climate justice metrics, and related kinds of things like that. And Dean is right, both Rob, who you all know, and then another individual in our Santa Monica office, who serves as one of the lead authors for the IPCC, who I just hired to work in my program. You've got sort of two globally respected climate scientists now here in Santa Monica who can work with you very closely, and Dean, on this. So I don't think this is going to be a big challenge at all, because the flexibility underneath those dimensions actually creates a lot of space to integrate the sustainability metrics.
Yeah, I could just jump in. Councilmember O'Connor, the agenda item for this study session talks about the council commenting on developing an organizational framework based on the dimensions of civic well-being and the Sustainable City Plan. So I think we've given pretty clear direction to staff that we want to see both of those things given.
Well, that's what I want to be very clear about that. Because frankly, the well-being project came out of the sustainability plan. The sustainability plan started out being one that focused on natural resources, that evolved over time, to include equity, to include social inclusion, to include civic engagement, to include housing and transportation. So now that we've matured and that inspired, along with, you know, what was happening elsewhere in the world, this concept and framework of well-being, I don't want to see climate left behind. And this is our opportunity to state that, to state that as a council. And as I feel strongly about it, and that's why I think it's important at this juncture, is where we communicate with our staff about this. So frankly, I will, would say, my motion would be move this forward, but also do it with a lens that does not lose that sustainability and Sustainable Cities climate aspect of it. I'm not telling you how to integrate that, that's not my job. But my job is to say this, this is, to me, is an important policy area that needs to be more strongly integrated with the framework. And that's my motion.
And I will second that motion.
I'll third it.
So...
That's why we're here. We welcome that and have the same view.
Any discussion? If not, we think we can do a voice vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. So I think that concludes today's meeting, and we will be back for our regularly scheduled meeting back at City Hall on Valentine's Day, which means, don't bring us chocolates, because that might get us screwed wrong. February 14.
Oh, yeah, Valentine's Day.
And I believe that lunch is being served.
Valentine's Day meeting. What time is it?